All right. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is the City of Palacca C R A workshop for July fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. We're gonna have our invocation and our pledge. We're gonna have the invocation from Chaplain Mulberry who have pledged and Commissioner Bora. Chaplain Mulberry, will you lead?
Father, again, we thank you for this day. We give you glory and praise. We give you honor. We lift you up. We magnify you and we bless your name. We pray, God, that you would bless the working minds of these, your people, as we come to do the business of the city. Pray for your wisdom and guidance in all that we undertake to do. Let your name be praised alone. We give you honor for it in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Tammy McCaskill here, Commissioner Will Jones. Is present via telecommunications technology. Commissioner Justin Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Rufus Marham.
Present.
Mayor Terrell Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Jeff Ross.
So, he's also. For the record, we have a quorum and they're all members are present. Next up is public comments. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. They'll actually be taken on topics of discussion. Anyone here wishing to speak during public comment? There are yellow speakers cards in the back of the room. Please fill those cards out and attach the agenda item that you want to speak to. And we will address that accordingly. Is there anyone here for public comment at this time? Here, no one will close public comment. We'll move on to agenda item number three, presentation and discussion overview of the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two and discussion budget. Appreciate it.
Okay, so I will start off by saying that the TIF fund overall did very well ending fiscal year twenty-one. And started off the year great. So we're looking at our balance forward into next year, and this is just strictly cash unrestricted moving forward of one million dollars combined. The rates at the top, as far as what is being contributed with property taxes is based on six point four. And also the county's flat mileage as well, which of course are undecided at this point. And we can go on to the next one, Sunny. So an overview of what we've done in downtown TIF this year. In December of twenty twenty-one, we pulled fifty thousand dollars from reserves to purchase properties. The first property was acquired. Or sorry, the first property that was acquired was three oh eight North Eleventh Street. And the second property was three oh two North Eleventh Street. We do have remaining funds in this fiscal year for demolition costs. And then we also have two public art projects, one carried over from last fiscal year. And they've just begun work on that one. That is actually across the street on the side of Nicole Salon Building. They just primed it. And we've gotten our first invoice on that. So our plan is to go ahead and carry forward those two public art projects. The downtown TIF also paid for the Christmas lights and decorations this fiscal year. And the recruitment project, which is the last of that because we actually adopted the building improvement grant. The last two recipients was Lemon Street Market for five thousand dollars and Jeremy and Crystal Alexander for twenty-five thousand, which will carry into next fiscal year as well as two keys. Two Keys has thirty thousand dollars awarded to them. And their documents are signed, but they're still in their period. So it's still an active grant.
Question. Question as it relates to the public art portion. I know we had those projects that were specifically allocated that we were looking at on the public arts piece. If you look at some of the other murals, one of the things that mural committee talked about was some of those murals are gonna need touch-ups pretty soon. It may be necessary to, so you carried the ten forward and then you added another ten to it.
Correct.
I don't know. It may be necessary for us at least as we do our contingencies to make sure that there's some other resources there. Because if you look at, there have been a few of those murals that are kind of dated. And they could definitely use touch-ups along the way. And a lot of people coming in town just to see those. And then there may be some additional public art projects that the community wants to see.
I put in five thousand for touch-ups, but if you want me to slot more, I can. I can bump it to ten.
Is, I just put it out there, real conversation to see what the agency's position was. If anyone else's thought was, anyone else thought about that as well?
Increase it to ten thousand versus the five thousand.
Which in that public art line would just increase it from twenty thousand to twenty-five thousand.
Any other comments on that?
Um, if I can, I'm having a hard time hearing and there's a lot of freeze frame. Can y'all hear me okay?
Yeah, we hear, yes, sir, we hear you.
Would it hurt to get, just go ahead and put ten thousand dollars in there and then see what it's gonna cost later?
That's what, so that was basically what Commissioner McCaskill just suggested.
Okay.
Just leaving the line, carrying over and leaving that line at twenty-five so that we can see what's there. And if it carries, then we'll know, we'll have a better idea moving forward.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Okay, I'm ashamed.
This year, we also wanted to move fifty thousand dollars into the building improvement grant, but decided that we would award a recruitment. Yes, and a recruitment project for an applicant. So this year it actually moved down to twenty-five. If it's the wish of the board, we can move that back to the fifty thousand. And that's what we've proposed in this budget.
To move it to fifty. Looks like we're gonna, I mean, it's, these grants are getting a lot of activity. A lot of people are asking for particularly in the central business district and the south of store. And so I don't think we've had, you know, much by way of traction north.
One.
But write the one for the fence.
No. For the building improvement cost share grant, there was one application. It was a different house.
And that was in the first period?
Yeah, in the first period.
Okay, so. And how many did we get in the other two districts?
I don't know the exact number, but it was a lot.
Significantly.
Significantly more.
Okay. So.
And that provides commercial and.
Right.
Yes, right.
Any questions or comments based on information you've heard thus far? And quite frankly, I don't know if there's ever gonna be an amount that you put in that line item that puts us to where you're gonna satisfy, you're not gonna satisfy the masses at all. Once you rank them, it'll end up with a whole different conversation. So fifty thousand proposed, seems as though there's, seems like everybody's, my consensus is okay with that. Let's move forward.
In the transfers category, I did propose an increase on the fireworks just based on actuals and the events. So this is actually a reimbursement to general fund where the Fourth of July actual event is paid from. So I'm proposing fourteen thousand to be sent over, and that's just to cover the cost of fireworks.
Question on the fireworks. Don't we also get contributions in from private?
Correct. So the contributions that come in to general fund pay for the portlets down at the riverfront, the catering and I'm gonna defer to Eddie and try to think of everything. There are some additional costs. So the.
For city, city calls.
Correct. And we take the contributions to pay for those additional costs.
Okay, that makes sense.
Go ahead.
The kids, kids play zone and then those like that. A couple of the, the catering for the VIP section upstairs.
And the other, the other thing is, I think, and by the way, great job on Fourth of July this year. I think having the festival aspect of it creates another opportunity to offset with some revenues. You know, it creates more from the standpoint of, from the labor side, but I think it offsets with revenues and it also puts people in a better mindset to contribute because they're seeing it grow.
Bringing that attention to our downtown area on the riverfront is just amazing for every business down there.
So yeah, this year was absolutely super. Just seeing, just seeing the spread go from, from the park all the way back to, to Reed Street.
Yeah, and then the food vendors pay us too. So we collected about ten thousand dollars from sponsorships and the food vendors.
And is there a way that if people wanted to contribute, like, chances of, we're not actively, or we're not actively seeking contributors, right? They just voluntarily saying, hey, I would like to contribute.
Now, we actually set out sponsorship levels. We have a list of probably about seventy-five to a hundred and twenty sponsors that we set out on a regular basis. And then we do go door to door. Aaron and Courtney went door to door, asked them if they wanted to.
Okay.
Yeah. Mandy, you know how that works, right? So, Miss Tucker's worked on that for a number of years before Mr. Cutright took over.
So you can have a bet.
So it is definitely a solicitation on it. The, I think the biggest piece was with the way the climate has been economically right now. You saw a reduction. Historically, it would've been around sixteen thousand in contributions we would get. We made the fireworks longer than they have been historically. And so, but the contributions have gone down by about thirty percent thus far. And so, you know, hopefully there's a upturn in the economy at some point soon. I don't know. It gasped being six dollars. But we will we'll, we'll hope that we can continue to move that forward.
Contribution went down, but attendance went up.
Absolutely.
Well, part of that contribution going down, that we had just came off of blue craps, a lot of our sponsors was kind of tapped out a little bit.
Right.
So moving into the projects, one notable. So moving into the projects, one notable change that you'll see in the next workshop. Is that we are anticipating additional funding needed for the, the street skate project. So that contribution from downtown CRA, we're gonna take it from a hundred and seven thousand. That was kind of projected initially and carried forward to about five hundred thousand.
If we go back to the fireworks piece for one second. Can we, I, I know that, that item looks, we're at fourteen. Can we take that up to twenty and see if we can squeeze a second fireworks and maybe in an off-season? So that there's an opportunity for us to do something different. We, we know just from the research that we've done, that fireworks are a great attractor into the downtown area. Any thoughts on that from the agency to be able to squeeze in a second fireworks activity? Whether that's, um, we have, we have fireworks with Blue Crab, we have fireworks with Fourth of July. It may be something we could do, maybe in the off-season, the Christmas season or something to that effect.
New Year's.
New Year's.
Right. Well, that's gonna be a hot season, and six thousand won't cover it. But, um, we can do it, maybe, um. Well, we can, we can try to see if there's a, an off-season time that works, that puts that in place. Yes, sir.
And the fireworks piece to that.
I got another thing, probably wanna at least talk about or think about with the. With Juneteenth and the Independence for all of America and different things of that nature. I was out in the Biden, um, some people came up to me and talked about, we, you know, we celebrate the Fourth of July, but I think we should celebrate. Think about at least celebrating Juneteenth in terms of some, some levels of fireworks or Independence Day for. All Americans too, so we just.
Commissioner Boron, and we actually got that on our calendar for a holiday to do for Community Fair next year. Since everything is kind of coming off the ground this year, next year, we have, Juneteenth would definitely one of the more, uh, events that we would have some going on to.
Right, fireworks too. I just wanna put that there.
Anything else?
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, regarding the, um, fireworks at, around Christmas or New Year's. Is, has there been any communication or could we ask some communication maybe with DPI and, um, the businesses? Not just downtown, but just in, in Plaquen in general, see if they would help sponsor that.
Yeah, we, we can. I, well, the letters that go out, um, a lot of them go out to chamber members already. But we can definitely extend the communication even further out.
I, I lost you for a second. I'm, for some reason, I'm having a bad connection today.
You got, you got that one G, yeah.
I'm, I'm on a hard connection, that's what's weird.
So, so we've, um, so the letters that go out, go out to a lot of the local businesses that are chamber members that have historically given. As well as some of the newer businesses and even individuals who've contributed, we can extend it. We can extend our reach even further. Um, so if there are any specific businesses that you have in mind. Get with Mr. Cutright and, uh, Community Affairs and we can make sure that, um, we add them to the comprehensive list.
I, I heard you say specifically, then you cut out. I'm sorry. I'm gonna, I'll tell you what, I'm gonna, I'm gonna switch to mobile and head to my other office. So I think it'll be, that'll be better for me.
You should try to log in on your flip phone.
I am. I'll do that right now, then I'll head to my other desk.
I have a question, um, and it's along the lines, when we doing fundraising, do we, for lack of better words. Are we nickel and diamond, or are we asking for contributions that will cover a multitude of? Events. Cause I know some, um, in my collecting of funding, um, they were, they were. They suggest or, you know, they make the suggestion that we ask for lump sum versus the nickel and diamond for every event. So how, how do we do that?
Eddie, do you wanna speak to that? I know at a previous, um, meeting, you suggested actually that very thing.
Yeah, you got, well, I, I'll, I'll take it so you don't have to stand back up again. The way that the fundraising has been event-specific, based upon what we're doing thus far. There are some organizations, um, some companies that will say, hey, we'll give you X amount of dollars and then you can use it for events that meet our criteria. But what we found historically is the trend that kind of went with George Pacific, for example, when Mr. Alexander was there, it's changed now. So where you get a lump sum from some of these major organizations in the past, they now wanna make sure it meets. So for example, GP's criteria is the four E's. And so if it doesn't meet the four E's, they don't wanna do it that way. If you're talking a, if they're gonna do five or six contributions for the year, then yeah, they'll try to put something from a budget standpoint. But most of these, most of the organizations wanna be a bit specific. And that's what we've seen as the trend, um, going around. And we, you know, the reality is, we actually got pretty good on fundraising, um, over the years. And so that piece isn't necessarily the, the issue. The issue is the number of bits are increasing on a regular basis and you're seeing significantly more activity throughout the entire community. And so, and the other part is people aren't giving the same way, just because of where we are, uh, from an economic climate. And so the num, the, the ratio at which they're given has gone down significantly over the last few years.
I think that's a great approach as well that we could look into, especially this year. Because we're really looking to solidify specific events that the commission is gonna improve in the next fiscal year and outline true budgets for them. So then we could approach certain sponsors and say, you know, do you wanna lump sum for a specific event? So it can be presented both ways, I think.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I was trying to get unmuted. I, I'm most, I was trying to get unmuted. I, I know personally, uh, I, from a business perspective, it would not matter to me. Necessarily what event it went to, uh, if you did a, um. A, a, a fundraising and you didn't specify the event, how would you do the marketing at that point? Or working credits?
How would, how would you market it?
How would you, how would you give, like, when you do, when you do the credits to the, the folks that sponsored? If, if, if a business gave you a couple of thousand dollars and look, I don't care if you put it towards one firework event or three fireworks events. How do you promote that company or give credits to that company for sponsoring? There's a lot of, a lot of times, you know, my business, same way. Uh, we don't mind donating money, but at the same time, it's, it's part of our marketing, uh, as, as a, um, business.
Any takers?
Well, I mean, one of the ways that we, the organization that I'm a part of, that has changed our method of, um, solicitation. Of funding, um, it, you provide the opportunity for them to specify if it's a one-time. And give them the opportunity to say what the one-time is, but if they're giving you, just to let them know that the opportunity is there to be publicized. On all events that that organization would be doing if it's not specific to a, um, one single event.
Alright, okay. Well, I guess the, the, the advantage, the advantage of not specifying is, is if you. If you do a fundraising event and you raise enough money to do three fireworks displays, then. You're, you're all good. If you only raised enough to do two and people specify which ones. It makes it more restrictive if, if you could shuffle money around and actually squeeze in the third. So I, I personally think it'd be better, um, and I, you know, from a business standpoint, wouldn't care if it was. Just direct to money and you guys specify where it goes. And not, uh, not, not run the risk of not having that third or fourth display, whatever, whatever the target number of fireworks displays are.
Well, I also think that, and I'm sorry, Commissioner Borum had a comment before here.
I, I think, I don't know, um, where we're trying to go with that, but I think if an organization gives money for. Whatever the occasion may be, that we have a checking balance in place. Then if they say, okay, well, I wanna give it to whatever event you have. Then whatever funds that we use, that we title these funds to those events and credit those, um. Contributors and, you know, and one is, if it's not exhausted, then if, if, if you don't. Return back to the vendor if they're not consumed. And so just because they give us a lump sum, we need to make sure that we are using those funds for the purpose. And if they're not used, not to, to another, uh, land or whatever.
I also understand, um, I, I guess, uh, the easiest example for me to use is. It's far different, um, when you're contributing to PAL. Because you know that all the, the organization's mission is geared toward you sport for your gear, or you're contributing, um, to, um. The, the Cancer Society or Putnam First Cancer, because you know the, the mission is, the mission is tailored. But when you're talking about giving to the city, it's probably the, the best example is what you do when you contribute to a university. And that money's not earmarked for a specific department, then you find yourself in a position where the discretion is not placed on staff as to where they use it. And one of the places of contention that you see is that the intent of the donor sometimes doesn't necessarily meet the need of the organization. And you can find yourself subject to scrutiny. And I've seen it, um, with people making larger contributions. And with, you know, and, and giving the desire that the money go into a certain pot. But also allowing leeway for it to go in different places where you now find yourself subject to scrutiny. And, you know, and as the dollars go up, um, the, the interest and the concerns change. And so that, I, I, it's just a, it's, it's not a, it's not a deterrent from, I think, what Commissioner Campbell said. But it's also just food for thought as we move forward, so that if that's the, the, the position that we decide to take. That we make sure that, you know, we set policies that will put us in a position so that there won't be. And so that we can minimize what controversies may potentially come from there.
Mayor, can I make a comment?
I would like to kind of clarify the, the, my question and the reasoning for my question. The reasoning for my question was just to determine how, the process of how we go out and solicit funds. Because in, again, in recent, more recent, we've had, speaking of GP, just the, the, the way that they change. And I wanna make sure that if they've changed, that we've made sure that we've aligned ourselves with other entities or other organizations. That may have changed so that we know not to go to them in nickel and dime, ask for a lump sum and move forward. That's the reason for my question, not to say who, how, and but just to make sure that we align ourselves and know the background. Of solicit, when we go to solicit funds, the best method to get the best bang for our buck when we are soliciting funds for that organism, from that organization.
Yeah, and that's done through the relationship management piece that comes along with it. And that's, so what we've been doing is really building relationships with, with the, the individuals who actually set those processes. So that that's put in place. And I think Mr. Cutright and his team as well as Ms. Tucker and her team have done. Um, an excellent job and the commission as a whole in building those relationships. So we do know.
Eric, could I offer a comment?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I apologize for having to appear by Zoom, but I think everybody understands why. This discussion was probably going to come up in the, uh, general budget discussion as well. I don't know, uh, that Mr. Cutright, uh, had an opportunity to fully explain, um, some of his concerns. But I believe that, um, he's had some concerns about, and I think you touched upon it. Mayor, and I think maybe, uh, it has been touched upon by Commissioner Campbell as well. But he has a concern about the repetitive process of going back to the same donor multiple times during the year. At least he's expressed that concern to me now. He's there, Mr. Cutright's certainly able to speak for himself, but he's expressed that concern to me. And, and he's also expressed a concern of, uh, of, of, you know, the fact that it seems to have a, a diminishing return effect. We had, uh, talked about establishing an overall budget in the, in the general budget. For all of the events that'll be handled through recreation so that you had a target. And then go into the, um, primary sponsors. That doesn't mean that you won't go hit individual sponsors or some additional sponsors. If you have a need or a special event, but try to hit the major sponsors once a year. And basically provide them with an idea of what our budget was and what our need was. To see if they might appreciate only being asked to contribute once. It might help them in budgeting how much they contributed. And an additional thought that I had, which mayor may not be good, but for discussion is. If we have multiple events budgeted in advance and planned in advance. You could even perhaps give them the option of, of deciding which ones they'd like to have their monies applied to. And that noted by sponsorship banners or whatever we're going to have at some of the major events, like Blue Crab or Mayor's Reception or whatever. So just food for thought.
Yeah, I mean, that was a great point, and that's where I was trying to hit too. But like you say, we have multiple events per year. There are budgets tied to those events, even if, um, there could be some incremental increases. Or whatever percentage increase, um, for, for having those events. But I think if we had like. You know how when you do fundraisers and you, you have a meter out there just saying, okay, well, hey, if you wanna contribute to this event. Um, we're at this goal and we're almost able to, you know, you're, 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 it'll show you your success or your. Your failure, you don't get, you get a chance to meet those goals. But long story short, you have some measuring stick out there that they can contribute to. For each organization, for each, um, event. And that way, it'll give each one of those entities an opportunity to select whichever ones that they wanna contribute to. For the entire year, uh, year of events. And so I think that'd be a, just another option.
And, uh, just add to that, myself and Ms. Malone had discussed about six or seven events that we thought the city might wanna take on next year. And when y'all voted on the one, we was, that's what we was gonna do, put earmarks and funds for that. And then we was gonna do a sponsorship, try to cover all of that. So that's what was in the plan already. And you will see that earmark of the best that we're talking about, I guess in the general fund meeting, you see what we're talking about.
Yeah, I, I, if I can take a, a bit of liberty, Mr. Alexander's in the back of the room, who's worked for a couple of corporate entities. And kind of did this for a living in, in a couple of capacities. You might come forward and, and I know you kind of heard the conversation. And, uh, just give your name and address for the record, so, and then. Just kind of. Check your mic, is it on?
Two different trains of thoughts, um, with George Pacific, we, we obviously had some set objectives, um, that the mayor referenced. The, around the four E's, enrichment, environment, education, and. I can't even remember what the fourth one is now, that's. Yeah, there you go, economics. So, um, then four, four of those that we, we focused our puns on. And their train of thought, I think to Mr. Campbell's point, maybe Ruth's point as well, is that. We wanted to make sure, we, we all have limited budgets, especially in this double economy. But we wanna make sure those funds are allocated to where, where our passions are, right? And what we're trying to enrich the community with. Um, in regards to the corporate, what I would consider a partnership. As opposed to an event sponsor, I think there's probably some validity there when it comes to budgeting. I would only caution that if you look at this overarching, we have a budget, we know what we're gonna spend this year. Um, obviously, the economy can change quickly. I think we've seen that in the last six months. I would caution that if we, if things turn around in six months, we may wanna reconsider reaching back out. Cause when folks do have, times are good, they're, they're more philanthropic, they're more willing to give in those good times than they are when things are tough. And they're really having to batten down the hatches. So there may be both. And there may be a time that a corporate event may wanna be a, or a corporate sponsor may wanna partner with the city overall and give a large sum of money. Things may turn around, things may slow down, but they may wanna sponsor a specific event, um, down the road as well. So I guess my, my thought would be. As the economy changes, there are probably a couple of different trains of thoughts during budgeting. Yes, it makes it easier. But at the same time, when, when times are good, people are typically more free with their wallets in their pockets, so. So I feel strongly both ways, I guess, as Brent Pilgrim would say.
Appreciate it. Alright, any other comments on this issue? So, um, moving forward, machine.
So we can move forward to the projects. Go back one for me, Sunny. That's okay. So the only notable change that you'll see in the next workshop is that street skate project. We are anticipating, um, needing additional funding for that. So it will, um, increase from a hundred and seven thousand to about five hundred thousand. So it will, um, increase from a hundred and seven thousand to about five hundred thousand, based on our estimates. And then the rest is kind of moving forward and rolling funds from this year that have been lined up with projects and anticipating the SRF payment contribution from the CRA. Any questions on the downtown budget?
Hey, if you, if you give me just a second, I'm switching over right now.
Okay.
This is your last switch.
We're gonna play, I got a question.
Are you with us?
His last switch is, I mean, switch the plan.
Another reason for the broadband discussion. Rural broadband. Commissioner, are you with us? Would be no.
We go to rural broadband, his phone won't be compatible.
He's on.
Don't worry, we're out of love.
Commissioner Ross. We got Mickey Mouse. That's not gonna work, sir. You sound like, uh, Mickey Mouse. Can you say something else for us? It, it, you may need to log off and log back on. It, that doesn't sound very, um, it didn't sound like your voice, let's put it that way. Never a dull moment.
Is that better?
That's much better. You aged tremendously in like two seconds.
It only happens on the Zoom platform for some reason. Um, I'm trying to write the, gonna ask, oh, so if we increase the budget for the, um, the, uh, the hard skate project, what are we doing to mitigate cost increases as time goes on? Because it doesn't look like there's going to be an end to it anytime soon.
I mean, what, what are the true measures to mitigate these costs when you got so many unknown variables? We experience it every day if you're doing anything.
I'm just, I'm just wondering what, maybe now is not the time to have the conversation, but instead of stopping the project because prices are, are running on, you know, can it be chopped up in small pieces that we can accomplish and, um, move towards getting it done?
So it's, it's always an option. I think at this point, um, we've been fortunate enough to be able to supplement, to make the project work. And we've dialed back the scope of projects in the past. For example, um, what we did at the Price Martin probably, probably the easiest example for the CRA. That project had to be dialed back because of rising costs. And so, Ms. Tucker, you have anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, right now that project is out to bid and, and when the bids come in, we'll see where we stand and do value engineering as we can. Um, limited, of course, to the scope that we're required to do for state appropriation grants.
Okay, I just, my, my fear would be that we take a look at it and, and go to award it and then say, well, there's just, doesn't look like we're not have enough money. So have the flexibility to be able to break the scope up and the multiple bites if we need to, is all I'm looking for.
The, the other thing that we've done also is, um, if it's agency specific, we've gone back to the agencies asking for, um, additional funding to cover the overruns. And so that's been, uh, we've seen that be fruitful in the past as well.
Okay.
Any other questions on projects? Miss Shank.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and move into, um, we're gonna stay in the downtown area, but we're gonna move into the piece where we actually had our public meeting. And, um, we had residents come in and express the things that they would like to see happen in the downtown district. So I'll let Mandy go over those.
Um, yes, so we held a notice public meeting with the residents of the districts on July seventh. Um, in the central, the suggestions were, um, to, uh, look into the drainage problem on Laurel Street near the Rotary Park. And, uh, sidewalk improvements, especially on St. John's Avenue and Laurel Street. And a partnership between code enforcement and the CRA to have a more active code enforcement presence within the district. And upgrade the trash facilities with more regular maintenance of trash cans, especially on St. John's Avenue. As well as, um, there was one that was suggested for both the, all three districts, which was making the areas destination sites, doing weekend events or having things such as the amphitheater that is a bigger draw. And those were the ones that were specific to the central district.
So is the Laurel project, does that straddle the, the central and south line?
Yes, I believe that it depends on which side of Laurel Street you're on. However, that area was included in the, um, the COVID sidewalk grant to connect the south to the central.
The five million, five point three?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, um. Any other questions based on what you've heard?
I guess I'm a little bit confused, maybe, um, are, are, are you talking about sidewalks or drainage on Laurel Street out of the, um, TIF fund?
Both, these were suggestions made by residents and both the sidewalks and the drainage.
Would drainage fit in the scope of the CRA? In the TIF?
Yes.
Yeah, infrastructure period.
Why would you think that? That would be more something with a general fund item, um, but not necessarily a TIF.
It, it's, it's addressed in, um, uh, statute one sixty three points three and the plan. Um, infrastructure improvements within the district. We, we've used district funds before for those projects.
It can be both ways. You can use general or, or, um, CRA. We just deal with such a limited amount of money.
Um, all of us limited.
Yeah. Yeah. I hear what you're saying. Uh, I just, don't, don't disagree that it can't be done. I just don't know that it should be used for that, um, that type of project. Um, because it's, it's not just draining that road. Uh, that, that water comes in from other areas. Uh, I personally would think that would want to use the money, uh, for anything but drainage and those type of improvements. Um, you know, if Laurel Street had to be repaved, would that come out of TIF money?
It would be an expense that could possibly come out of the TIF funding.
Right.
Um, but that's at the pleasure of the, of the board. Um, these were just suggestions made by the residents.
Is there any, does the city have any, uh, anything planned for the drainage issues? I mean, I, I know what they are in that area, but are there any plans right now to address that from the city anyways?
I would need to double check with Mr. Griffith and get back to you on that. Um, just to make sure. Hold on, I'll see if I can get him to come in.
I can tell you that currently in the proposed budget, that is not something that is slotted in. It's something that, you know, wanted, we wanted to bring to the attention of the board that potentially in the future, we could look at it as a project. I think our focus right now is getting through our current projects that we have that are out to bid and actually in construction at this point.
Okay.
Is that something we can bring back for the next budget workshop?
Yes, we can.
So are you, Commissioner, are you okay with us bringing that back to the next budget workshop?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I, I just, um, wanted to, wanted to make sure that I was understanding correctly because I, I personally feel like that road services so many other roads, it, it would be hard to target that. I mean, if, if, if the TIF had a little bit of, um, involvement in it, I wouldn't have any heartburn on, on that. But if we said, we're just gonna, um, start this project out of TIF money only, that, that would be a big hit.
It, I don't think that it, in my opinion, um, I don't think that the TIF would be bearing the entire expense. That's something that we could look at better place, um, grants if possible with a TIF contribution. It wouldn't be the bearer of the entire budget.
Would the, would the county not be able to help with that since that's a feeder road coming off of Kroll Avenue?
That's a question for you.
I just asked a question. I mean, I'm, it, it just makes sense to me. If you're coming down Kroll, you, you take that, um, you know, short Laurel and you're right there. Uh, and that's, that's a major feeder, uh, getting from twenty two seventeen.
Yeah, it's just, that's just like asking that DOT to do the same thing. You, you're gonna run into a logistics nightmare probably from the standpoint of getting a commitment.
Knowing if the board wants to actively engage in this type of project, that's something that we can kind of put on our CIP to look for funding and, um, other contributions.
Um, yes, so as Ms. Shank said, there are no capital projects scheduled as of right now for Laurel Street. However, the existing storm, storm inlets are now scheduled to be cleaned with the new back truck. Um, there is also, and he reminded me, um, that I believe these are in the South District. The, the old broken storm inlet tops throughout the districts, um, need to be addressed as well.
Those would be specific to the CRA. Any other questions? If you need any more detail on that, Commissioner, um, I guess probably the same dude is get with Ms. Tucker, Mr. Griffith. Um, and then they can blast something out to everyone once there's an answer.
Okay.
All right, we are.
I think I'm good if we, if we have a workshop on it.
Yeah, we're about, we're about a minute past our overall, um, scope for this meeting, but we're gonna continue on. And then we'll do our special call, um, soon thereafter, for those who logged on just for that special call meeting.
I'll speed up.
No, no, you're fine.
Um, so moving on to the South Historic District, um, one thing that we accomplished this year was the CRA plan and updates that was completed. We also gave a residential rehab and emergency grant to four eighteen River Street. And we also did the building improvement grant and allocated fifty thousand dollars this year. Whatever isn't spent this year can roll into next year's budget. But if we're looking at, scroll down to the next page for me, Sonny. In next year's budget, we propose the same amount, the fifty thousand dollars. And then we increased the allocation for sidewalks. So a trend that you'll see in each of these districts is the new building improvement grant, carrying forward any existing projects that are still underway and then also allocation for sidewalk repairs. Because that is something that was expressed by the residents in that meeting. So we are getting a list together of all the sidewalks and addressing them currently in this fiscal year as well as next fiscal year.
So in South Historic is a three thousand for festivals. Um, was that? That was, you just put three thousand and there's a placeholder?
Correct, yeah.
Outside of Porch Fest, are there any other major activities that we're seeing?
Yeah.
So. And we, we know twenty five hundred is the, the max of what we're getting.
Right, well, I thought we had, at one point I thought we put a maximum of seventy five hundred for all of the festivals at one point in that country.
In each district?
No, 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 just for everything as a whole.
What we did was on the, on the class A's, there was a twenty five hundred dollar grant cap that was put out there at one point. Um, we capped it based upon, um, we set the criterion and kept the grant allocation based upon certain, um, what certain festivals did from a, from a population standpoint or an attendance standpoint. And then, um, and that's where we kind of moved from. It looks like with this number, they've got, they're looking, uh, it looks like anticipation of a class A and then possibly funding of a smaller festival based on what the number looks like, if I'm guessing correctly.
It can be, um, in all honesty, I just took whatever amount was budgeted this year and carried it forward. So if it was the wish of the board to reduce or increase, then we could.
I'll just keep it, keep it worse than I guess.
I got a question regarding the sidewalks.
Yep.
Um, does the city not have a crew anymore that, um, they used to have a, the crew that they would use, uh, prison, the prison labor to help, um, doing sidewalk replacement. It was, uh, very efficient, affordable. Um, is that a possibility nowadays with the increase in cost of labor materials?
A lot of the sidewalks were done in-house last year.
All of them?
A significant portion of the sidewalks were done in-house last year.
Okay.
Um, we took the larger projects out to bid.
Okay, cool deal.
And so, um, most of the smaller patchwork was done in-house. And so larger projects like, um, the sports complex was done, um, through bid because there, it was just a bit more than we could handle internally.
It, in, um, twenty twenty, the spring of twenty twenty during the lockdown, um, I actually, well, we partnered with Public Works and walked the entire South Historic District marking and measuring all of the sidewalks that needed replacement. And, um, that was part of the, of the figuring for this item.
I don't see it.
There's fifty thousand, um, there's a note, it's actually in the Capitol Outlay.
On the first section.
For South Historic.
So, okay.
Just, um, the bottom part of it. Look, you're right.
Okay, okay.
But a trend, a trend you will see in all of the districts is the new building improvement grant and then a focus on sidewalks. Because that, like I said, the residents that came forward, that was one of their main concerns.
Yeah, and based on the, um, the estimation using current pricing for sidewalk demolition and pouring, fifty thousand would take care of about fifty percent of the sidewalk replacement needed in the South Historic.
Well, the question would be, would they be able to do all of the sidewalks that, say for instance, when you, when you do the allocation in, as part of the plan, normally, you know, it normally need to happen during that year. So you think that would be something that they can accomplish within the year?
This, yeah, this, this budget item was, um, was priced out basing a contractor coming in and doing it all at once.
Okay.
Just to get it done so that it doesn't disrupt, you know, the, the residential neighborhood a long period of time.
Am I correct in understanding, is, is it five thousand or fifty thousand to do all the sidewalks?
In the South Historic District, the cost estimate is fifty thousand to do half of the sidewalk repair needed in the South Historic District. If we wanted to do it all in the same year, it would need to be closer to a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. I guess I misunderstood when I read this. So the, what's allocated is fifty thousand for sidewalks. Um, and that's, that's only going to do half of what's in the south side. And that's that's only going to do half of what's in the South Side.
That is correct.
So there's what's allocated is fifty thousand for Capitol Outlay where the the pleasure of the residents based upon the public meeting is that there be attention to sidewalks. And so the the immediate allocation is five thousand for sidewalks and but you can fund the rest of it.
The five thousand that I think you're looking at is a line that shows the increase and decrease.
Right, right, I see.
So the entire line is for sidewalks, just so the Capitol Outlay line is just for sidewalks, no other projects.
Wow, that seems like a lot of money, a hundred thousand dollars. How many linear feet is that? Do we have an idea?
We take volunteers and donations too.
I have a spreadsheet. I can go get that figure for you and bring it right back.
I just, that's a lot, that's a lot of money for just the South Side.
I wonder if that includes line of Florida furniture because that was in some bad spots in there. And the old Florida furniture where the coal cypress, cypress, yes. This is bad. This is
Yeah, Mandy did indicate that they did walk and mark. So I'm sure she has, yeah, she has a specific list.
Okay, can we step off the sidewalk for a second and keep rolling? You're behind schedule.
Next up is gonna be your South Historic. I know we've kind of touched on the fact that residents wanted to see sidewalk repairs. Let's see if I can read over Mandy's notes. Gas streetlights in the South District being turned on was one resident suggestion as well as traffic calming on River Street's brick intersection. There is also a level of bricks at the intersection of Kirkland and River Streets and this resident spoke in favor of underground utilities and a wider bike path on River Street. Another resident also talked about a partnership between code enforcement and the CRA for additional code enforcement activity, sidewalk improvements, sewer cover improvements, investigating the feasibility of underground power lines, reinstalling the granite curbs. And the intersection, which is five corners of Laurel, Kirkland and Seventh Streets should have something nice there to become a better focal point in that area. And maybe some type of program that's a beautification or deferred maintenance for private lawns. And I believe when that resident spoke about that, it was more of kind of a trying to think the word, like a contest, I think, yeah, okay. You know, for residents to partake in. Another resident also talks about making specific areas a destination site such as the amphitheater and more weekend events. So there there are some specific items that residents requested in there. Main thing, as I said, we focused on was the sidewalk improvements and then also the sewer covers. So.
You know, I don't think they need to wait until like budget time to do that. I mean, I think they they meet on a regular basis in the CRA districts or whatever. So those are things that, you know, could be brought for way prior to budgeting time.
I I agree with you. The plan, the plan calls for us to meet with the different districts as approaching the budget. So it's a it's an additional
Okay.
step. I just want to make sure we covered everything. So in the South, the recommendations were gas streetlights. You read them all? So the, thank you, the linear footage total in the South Historic for the sidewalks is four thousand three hundred and forty-three. And I have a spreadsheet that breaks that down by nine one one address and the footage at each address. And I'd be more than happy to send that out to the board via email if you'd like.
I guess my thought is fifty thousand is a lot just to do sidewalks. We need to have some allocation for programs out for some of these other things that are on that wish list besides besides the sidewalks so that there so that we don't find ourselves just doing a budget amendment in the middle of the year in case some viable project comes up for for the area. So I would I would say carve out a piece of that. Take fifteen thousand out of the fifty thousand that's specifically for sidewalks and have that, you know, for Capitol Outlay and sidewalks can be an option for that as well. That's a thought. I think it it still allows the district to be able to do what they, you know, what's in place. And if we find that the overwhelming spirit is just to spin it all on sidewalks. But I think we need to to, you know, to look at what we can do. And so I I know we can probably do fifteen hundred off a contract, we can probably do with that amount that's out there, at least, you know, somewhere between fifteen hundred and two thousand feet of sidewalk, linear feet of sidewalk at six feet wide, just based on those numbers, if not more.
But the sidewalk sixty wide?
No, but one of the things that we're trending towards wider sidewalks, walkability and and for other purposes throughout districts. So it may be an opportunity to do that. One of the things that we're doing, we're doing eight eight feet wide sidewalks in downtown in some areas and in some of the other areas, they're doing walkability at six feet.
Okay.
So is there is any concerns or thoughts on that suggestion?
I think it's a great idea. It can always go back.
Still give options. They'll give options, so.
All right, moving forward.
Was that known?
Yes, I'm gonna put it in the budget notes in the GL line. So it'll actually be in our system.
So I think that helps us as far as been able to deal with some of the lighting issues, some of the other stuff as well.
Would it be safe to say that strategically, the plan right now is over the next three years to replace all the sidewalks?
Yep. The plan was to do it in two years, but we've kind of just pushed it out an extra year. Unless there's a increase in values based on our tax increment that allows us to do more over the next couple of years.
See how that works out.
Thank you for your optimism.
I I looked at the Northeast Florida Association of Realtors the other day and St. John's County had a decrease from May to June. They had a five percent decrease in home, the median income or median home sale price. So, you know, it's that's an indicator.
Yeah, now they're only selling for five hundred.
Actually, there's still no need for five hundred, but they're they they have a five percent decrease.
It's hard to decrease it when it's on the floor. Um, next. No, for hours.
Okay, so we can go ahead and move on to the North District. Again, we implemented the building improvement grant and allocated thirty five thousand dollars this year. Whatever is not spent this year that gets awarded will be rolled into next year's budget. But if it's the wish of the board, we'll continue with the thirty five thousand built into that budget. No money this year has been spent on sidewalk repairs. So one question I had is if we wanted to keep the allocation of twenty thousand for sidewalk repairs next year. And also potentially do some hot asphalt mix in specific areas. So I increased that line by thirty thousand and you'll see sidewalks. But my question is if it's the wish of the board to include some specific areas for hot mix asphalt, which is more costly, but it's more durable.
It's the north?
Correct.
Well, we use some for road leveling over there. We've got some streets over there that are like, it's like going on roller coasters. And so if you look at some of the brick streets there, particularly on Bronson from fifth to second to third, it's it's bad.
It's bad. I've been on there as well.
So why don't we put sidewalk repair at fifteen and put some of that and put some more of it towards road repair or leveling. Because it's, I mean, you can't travel down some of those streets in North historic.
That's the brick stuff too, which should be easily able to be maintained, right? Who knows?
I'm sorry, I I'm not sure. I don't know.
Yeah. The way it said, unless we're gonna come in, because we've already done some portable water over there.
So fifteen thousand to sidewalks and then allocate twenty five thousand to looking into Bronson fifth to third?
We got fifty, you're putting fifty.
What's your ten for?
Yeah, thirty five.
Okay.
Well.
What would be the logic of using asphalt over concrete on the sidewalks? I'm just just curious.
Asphalt was for roadway.
Okay. I thought I thought you were saying use it in lieu of concrete.
Two, two different things. I was referencing in that, and specifically the North District, some of the concerns that we've heard over the year has been sidewalks and also mainly the roadways. So staff, you know, can put more funding into the roadways. That's what the board.
So, yeah.
So what was that split again?
I'm suggesting fifteen and thirty five.
And if estimates come in higher or we want to pick specific roadways, there is still funding in the reserves estimated about sixty three thousand in the north. So that's something that, you know, during the budget process, we would come to you for an amendment.
Yeah, I just think our priority north should be getting the road so that they can be traveled on. We've worked on infrastructure, making sure that those roads, those roadways are are safe.
I agree.
All right, anything else in north?
For north, we did not have any residents that came to the CRA meeting. But obviously, if anyone in the public does have anything they want to share, they're more than welcome to email into Mandy Tucker or Jonathan Griffith.
Anything else, Commissioners?
I'm good.
All right. So that's it. Next budget workshop. Commissioner Jones?
I don't have anything.
Thank you, sir.
So for citywide budget workshop utility, we have moved to the next.
Your time to go to next workshop?
We have.
We got a special call in between.
Listen, I'm in budget mode.
If there's nothing else in this meeting, we will, we'll go ahead and adjourn so that Commissioner Rawls, any comments in closing from the agency of we'll just ask if anyone has any additional comments at this time.
I have none.
Anybody else? Any comments? If not, we'll wait for when's our next scheduled budget workshop for for CRA?
First, right?
Next week. All right.
Um, is that is that at nine o'clock as well?
No, sir. I believe it's it's three. I'm double checking the calendar, but off my top of my head.
Okay, I don't have a time yet on it.
Yes, sir, it's at three.
It's three o'clock, three.
Fifteen hundred. Okay. See y'all then.
All right. All right, if there's nothing else, we'll stand adjourned.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move right into the special call and then we'll take a break. Thank you. Special call meeting. Next. Little call for this meeting. There's one in the back.
Commissioners Tammy Mathas, go, Will James, Commissioner Justin Campbell, Commissioner Rufus Moore, New Hill, by notice that a special call, Black City Commission meeting has been called to commence at nine fifty AM on July fifteenth. The purpose of the meeting is to authorize the mayor to sign a grant agreement for the airport improvement program, AIP project number three twelve zero zero six one zero three five dash twenty twenty-two. Please governor, some supporting.
We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Camille Mathas, go here. Commissioner Will James.
He's present.
Commissioner Justin Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Rufus Moore.
Present.
Mayor Taylor Hill.
Here.
We have a call, sir.
Okay, we're now open the floor for public comments. There are no one here for public comment. Public comments, we limited to three minutes. No, actually, we take it on topics of discussion. Public comment, seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Moving on to the agenda item, adopt resolution twenty twenty-two R one ten. Authorize the mayor to execute a grant agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution of the city of Plank, Florida, as the mayor and interim city clerk, execute the federal aviation administration grant agreement for the design and rehabilitation of West Taxi Lanes and Peeling Apartments, writing for scripters.
So.
Some motion on the floor in a second. If you look in the top, Mr. McNair, do you want to take this item or is it Ms. Tucker? And I'll just do this, since Ms. Tucker just stepped out. One of the purposes, we have the grant agreement in place is ninety percent funding. And so that funding comes in an amount of seventy two thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars. The reason I brought this forward is so that the commission could go ahead and provide the appropriate approval as we move forward. Are there any questions that it pertains to the grant itself? Not entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion on the floor in a second. We're now open the floor. Public hearing, is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion carries unanimously. There are no other items on the agenda at this time. If there's no objection, we will stand adjourned from the special phone meeting. I'm gonna break. We will return back for a budget workshop. I'm gonna break, we will return back for a budget workshop.
I just realized, we are called to order. Um, for the record, we have, we have Commissioner Tammy McAsco, Commissioner Will Jones. Via telecommunications, uh, Justin Campbell, Commissioner Rufus Borum, and Mayor Tarral Hill. We have a form, sir.
Moving into um, our public comments, public comments will be limited to three minutes. No, actually, we take it on topics of discussion. Is there anyone here for public comment? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. We'll move right into our agenda, presentation and discussion of the budget.
So this is our first scheduled budget workshop. We did make a change. We are presenting that. We're gonna move the utility fund to the seven twenty-one workshop. Um, that does lead that workshop to be very heavy, so if needed, we might need to have another workshop. So we can jump right into my presentation. Starting off with a reserve history, so general fund reserves has seen a significant increase over the years. Which is in part to staff. Decreasing spending as they can. When we ended fiscal year twenty twenty-one, um, the general fund balance. At the time. Was. Eight million, six hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. I believe part of that balance is the ARPA funding that we received, the two point five. Because that was initially deposited into general fund. So in my projection, I actually took out the ARPA funding, so you won't see that in your reserve balance. Um, moving on to general fund obligations, at this time, these were the items that I could think in specifically that we have. Coming up next year that we need to consider in our budget cycle. One being the uh, plac of pride contract with PBM, which estimated, uh, we're slotting fifty thousand dollars into that department. Up to six percent increase on health insurance. Eight hundred megahertz radios, it's my recollection that commission was in agreement to move that to ARPA funding, so.
As we're, so let me stop you right there. So. I guess the question for the commission is, we discussed this during the workshop at the Price Martin Center to go ahead and pay for the radios for law enforcement. Um, and so we haven't officially approved it, but it was, it seemed to be consensus at the time, such were make sure. That we're all still on the same page as it relates to the radios.
What we we did, the rate was the radios for the. Um, we did three thirty for the. Okay, with three thirty for the packs, okay, okay.
Looks for air packs. And the five thirty was, the five thirty was was basically held out and set aside for the radios. Based on the conversations that we have, the commission, everybody's on board, everybody, is everybody on board with that? Okay, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, yeah.
Wha- what about the uh, number one item, uh, is said fifty thousand, but I thought the mayor. Mentioned forty-five, cuz they want it. Eighty or something, and we got, we got it down to forty-five, so is there additional five thousand added to it or what happened? When we are. We voted, we voted on forty-five.
Mr. Holmes, did you wanna speak on that?
Well, we put a a bit of a contingency fund in there because for one, um. They've come back and asked for some additional improvements to the boat. Um, based upon the charter captain's um, assessment of its needs. And actually, we also just built in a little bit of a, of a, an overlap there. Uh, we have, as you probably already know, we've started incurring storage charges on the boat. Um, and so, you know, rather than running ourselves short on the budget, we just went ahead and put it at fifty.
So let's break it down to the forty-five for the contract and then do a contingency.
Okay, sure. Yeah, you're correct, though, when you stated the mayor has suggested, uh, actually negotiated down from sixty to forty-five, that's entirely accurate.
Okay, so we'll just have that contingency there, just for um. Just in case there are some unforeseen repairs or anything. Or the weight distribution changes. So.
Moving on to decision units. Same procedures last year, anything above and beyond a current budget for a department. I have asked them to put a decision unit forward. You will see departments on here that are not being presented today. But I wanted to make sure that you had a running list of every decision unit that was out there. A majority of the decision unit is facility repairs. So one thing I can say is that if it's the wish of the commission, we could. Take the ARPA funding that we're gonna use for the radios and that five hundred and twenty-one thousand that we budgeted in this year. We could allocate that to facility repairs. Um, I understand that we don't have a. Specific plan of, you know, the future of, for instance. The annex building, um, however, that that roof is actively leaking. Um, as well as the back room is flooding and for the sake of our records in that building and um. Our employees, that's something that I feel should be addressed.
Okay, so we can take part of that five hundred and twenty-one thousand, address the roof issue over there.
Correct. Five twenty-one.
Be.
This year's budget commissioner, we budgeted five hundred and twenty-one thousand this year. Estimated so far on radios, the update we got was five hundred and thirty thousand, so that's what we're proposing, the ARPA expense.
I think the other thing we gotta do is have an allocation for. Um, we gotta come up with our, our records keeping plan. There hasn't been a records keeping plan in place. We've got records that go back to the eighteen hundreds. And some of those records need to be stored. Differently than they are, we're not in compliance from that standpoint, and so it may be necessary for us. You know, prior to, to to set, to get those records put in a safe place. You know, we got Civil War records, all kind of stuff, that's floating around here, and it needs to be put in a, a very different place. And I'm sure from clerk school, you've kinda learned what some of those standards are, as well as having that stuff pretty electronically. And so I think we need to start allocating some resources to uh, updating and allocation. So I I would suggest. Put at least twenty-five thousand in place, having conversations with some of the local universities. To see if it's something that they can help us with as far as archiving. And then that at least give us, if we need to get a storage facility or whatever it may be in the interim while we're building public works, which I think has some built-in storage. Um, it'll give us great opportunity.
I agree, that's been something that we've identified, um, for quite a few years now. And I think that's a little time to move forth with that, definitely with the records that we have, again, with retention. Um, it's something that we should move on.
Let's pull that from the. And that five twenty-one as well.
Question. Well, how did that project ever stop? Because that was something that we had when. Advanced, advanced in general.
It never started. As the, it didn't stop, it never started. We. We, we talked about it. We prioritized it, but it never, we prioritized it, but as that transition and all that other stuff took place, it was never something. That was put into place when you transitioned from having um, the assistant clerk, who was also the secondary city manager at the time. When that, because if you remember, she actually was set, set aside for records keeping. The clerk wasn't doing the records keeping portion, because she was the records keeping professional. And then it never, ever, what the commission's mandate was, never came to fruition. And so that plan was never completed, and that's one of the things that me and Ms. Krantz have been talking about. Um, as she continues to go through the stuff with her school, and she's seen those deficits and. There just hasn't been a budget allocated to specifically do those, and been a request from the clerk's office.
Well, that, we're just thinking about certain, certain filings that, you know. Need to be from, I guess, a state mandate filing, which you have to. Need to be in in into your records in terms of.
Well, the bigger nightmare is when someone requests um, documents, let's say, from a, from a housing perspective. And they're looking for older documents and it becomes a shuffle and bringing additional people in to try, you know, try to locate. Those items that we can start to archive and catalog in a different way, because they're, you know, they're, they predate all of us.
So we're doing what you, twenty-five thousand?
I think it's a starting point. It gives us, it gives, it gives the ability to develop a plan, to seek out. And if nothing else, to create alternative condition storage.
I was supposed to be working with the, one of the schools and then the um, historic society, what's his name, Mr. Larry B.
Yeah, we talked about, uh, Mr. Beaton, we talked about the library at Congress, and we talked about University of Florida.
Okay.
But I think it, it, this is the perfect time for us to, to start to push forward on those things, you know, with the, with our preparation resources.
Good work.
So you will see a bulk of the community affairs. Um, the first two, we will go in more detail whenever we go over those budgets. Um, but mainly the facility repairs, which, you know, once we go over community affairs, we'll touch on those specific. we'll touch on those specific decision units. Today, we are only going over commission and city manager and planning and zoning that have decision units. So I'll just touch on those quickly. City manager has a PIO or a Public Information Officer slash Marketing Media Manager position. And then, um, we put the Assistant City Manager on a decision unit. That is a current position that's funded in this year. However, we're moving it to a decision unit for next year. And at the request of, um, commission, we also put the recruiter for city manager on here as a decision unit. I know it's something that we all don't really want to talk about, but, um, Mr. Holmes will be departing us next year. So I think it's imperative that we really think about planning for the future. Planning and zoning has a comp plan update, that's seventy-five thousand, um, that they are asking to do that update. And then, um, commission request, um, a commission program slotted at seventy-five thousand dollars. Mr. Holmes? The seventy-five thousand commission program.
I requested it seventy-five be set aside so that we can look at potential programs. You remember the last time we actually had, we had five thousand or so allocated. So one of the things we looked at is the potential, we just basically put a placeholder in place for the commission. It allows us to look at whether we need, um, staffing, part-time staff to deal with some of the needs of the commission and allow you to be able to look at, uh, where we are from expensing, um, where you are from programming. And so we put that number in place so that that would give us at least, uh, the option to look at how we can allocate some resources towards that and have a greater conversation.
So listed it as a placeholder, just so we can keep that on our running list. Um, we can jump over to the property appraiser results. Um, you can skip that one. So as a result of the valuations that came in on July first, I took the liberty of basically giving a chart to the commission so that as we work through the budget process with general fund, you're able to look at if you were to keep a flat millage of six point four, you would produce an additional two hundred and forty-four thousand in new revenue. And from there, I kind of tapered it down all the way to a seven point four, which is a one mil increase. So just numbers there for you to think about as we go through the budgeting process um, of what staff is proposing and what our needs are going to be. Are there any questions about this chart? So the first one we're going to go through is the commission budget. It's in your email. Um, I'll go ahead and just start talking, so. Okay, so as a whole, we are proposing a five percent increase to salaries, and we also have the intern budget at twenty thousand. Um, the overall increase for commission budget is about twenty-four thousand, and that is really attributed to, um, the professional services line. Our lobbyists, whenever we committed to the new firm this year, it's carrying forward into next year. So that's the increase that you're seeing. We kept the special events for each commissioner, um, for you to do your community events that is still built in the budget. And we also made sure we aligned, um, additional costs for travel. So we gave an extra three hundred dollars to each commissioner, travel for schooling and conference, just to account for. Any questions?
I really can't see the, uh.
Yeah, yeah, one second.
How, how are we going to get a copy?
Oh, you put six dollars. I think it went to sixty-three hundred.
And commissioners, that is partly on me. I did ask, um, due to the rising cost of travel and, and the fact that some of the Florida League of Cities, um, meetings are now going to be in like Hollywood and, and areas in the southern part of Florida. I asked for, due to the increased cost of, of gas, that a little bit more be added to, hence the sixty-three hundred.
Thank you. Thank you. Much appreciate.
I, I think that a little more than three hundred need to be added.
Yeah. I, I agree.
I mean, when, when you think about it.
It didn't.
When you think about it, the local, well, the majority of the service on, um, who works on board that's on the portal level. So of course, we're not trying to drain, but that's where a lot of our relationships are built and formed. And that's where we get a lot of the dollars that we do have, um, travel that comes, so that's just something to take.
I, I agree. Because I have to do additional travel prior to a lot of our events and conferences.
Yeah, if you look at the, I guess the only thing is, if you look at, look at where we spent, then I think that was, there's a lot of that stuff been virtual. Oh, eleven thirty. Eleven thirty is what you said. All right, let's just. You already have it. It's already in your email. Yeah, it was. Almost is. I can still. All right, I take it we never adjourned, so we, 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 we never took a break, so we've still been live.
So just as a first glance, I'm going to go back and check that top salary line. Um, because it looks like my formula probably didn't calculate correctly. I know there's not an eighty thousand dollar increase to commissioner salaries.
Well, it's, well, it's in there now.
It is, it is. It's a formula, so I will say I'm sorry, uh, I didn't catch that. But as a whole, um, we are proposing a five percent increase across the board. Um, I have been monitoring what other agencies are doing. Some already have a merit program, some are going off of the current, um, CPI, which May to June, I believe, was nine percent. So I've seen anyone going from a cola of four percent all the way up to ten percent. And some are staggering it, so we kind of went in the middle and proposed a five.
I saw a stagger, um, four plus three in Daytona. And so they, they did it in two, in two hits.
Yeah, and if it's the wish of the commission, I can model out different scenarios. You would just need to advise me what you'd like to see.
Model out.
I think the other thing is also model out the compliance because the twenty-six, I mean, the minimum wage compliance area won't be realistic. It will be way above that, by the, what we're seeing on the trends of salaries right now. You know, fifteen was supposed to be the floor, but you're going to see closer to twenty being the floor at some point in the next few years, and if we don't, and we got to figure out how to get there to stay competitive. Because, I'll give you an example, we, um, we increased law enforcement salaries to forty-one thousand as the base. Cities like Daytona, they got a lot more money and they got a lot more officers, but they just jumped up to fifty. And now, and they're doing a four and a three behind it. And, and so the sheriff's office is getting a ten percent bump across the board. You know, you're saying it in every, every area, fire, the works, and so, um, you know, we got our salary study in place, now we've got some leverage as far as, you know, we kind of kept in the middle of the road on the ranges, but we got to come up with a long-term plan. I think that has to be, uh, a commission workshop sooner than later as to how we transition and set money aside to do so. So, uh, but it's a conversation for another day, not for this one.
Okay, so we can move out of commission and move on to city manager, if you don't have any other questions.
Yeah, so you're just going to take out the eighty?
I'm not going to take out the eighty, but I am going to check that formula, I'm sorry. It should only be calculating five percent.
Leave it there as a placeholder.
Next up, we have city manager.
Before we move forward.
Just, just Commissioner Jones?
Yes. Before we move forward, uh, Ms. Shank, could you actually see what the increase would be? You know, it won't be eighty thousand, uh, if you used the nine percent increase, uh, when you come back for the next workshop, so we'll have that in there for just.
So what the five percent cola would be?
If you guys.
You're, you're breaking up a little bit, so that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, Commissioner Roll's playing.
I think he said nine percent, what the nine percent cola would be.
Nah, I thought he said five. I thought he's, nah?
Ten, nine?
I heard nine.
Yeah.
Okay.
You want nine percent cola?
And we can do that.
I said, nah.
We can't. You, um, your, your signal is really bad. Can you, can you say something else so we can see if it's clearing up?
Can you put in the chat, Mayor?
Can you type?
I'm traveling. I'm, I'm traveling.
That's better, that's better. What's your, what's your percentage? Was it five or nine?
I said nine.
Okay, because it broke up, we couldn't tell whether it was five or nine.
Okay.
Okay.
City manager, you will see a decrease of the ninety thousand for Assistant City Manager that has been moved to a decision unit. And then also the decrease for, um, Westlaw. That we are moving over to the attorney's budget instead of splitting it between the departments next fiscal year. Um, it's no impact, it just makes it easier so that that expense is allocated to one department.
Can you put that up on the screen? Uh, my screen doesn't show city manager budget right now.
Load up, just load that department up. We are, it's the second tier.
Don, this is, um, the same from your email yesterday. If that helps. And you'll see reports behind them, so as I'm inserting budget notes, I'm trying to make sure that I include those. So instead of seeing lump sum items, the commission sees the details and notes behind them.
So why did you decrease the Assistant City Manager?
That was at the request of the city manager. So, Mr. Holmes, do you want to speak?
So repeat that again, what happened? We decreased.
So I understood we were, of course, I'm still not seeing, I still don't understand the breakdown here.
You are, where it says Personnel Services, City Manager's Office Department is right on the second line? Are you with us?
Yeah, I, I, okay, I did, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, I, I thought we had a hundred thousand actually decision unit on city, on the Assistant City Manager. I thought we just talked about that a minute ago.
No, no.
Well, it was on that, um.
It was on that original decision unit sheet.
That was on the presentation.
Yep.
Correct, so decision units are not built into the budget. So those are items for the commission to take into consideration and approve or not approve. So I almost noticed that wasn't your intent.
I understand that, but you got ninety thousand decision unit here at item two, and we had a hundred thousand at item, as a decision unit on the Assistant City Manager in that first display that you had advertised. I, I think a hundred is probably more appropriate.
Correct, and that's what's on the decision unit. The ninety thousand is because this fiscal year was budgeted at ninety thousand.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't understand that.
That's okay.
I want, I, I'd like to see it remain in the budget.
So all of these, all of these are not in the budget?
Budget, correct.
They're not in the, okay.
Yeah, they're.
Decision units are not built into the budget, that's correct. So if it's, um, consent, then I can move that back into the budget.
So it would be, if we did all decision units, it'd be one, one million.
Correct. Some of those, um, looking back at the decision units, that is correct, it's in excess of a million dollars, but most of it is facility repairs in the Community Affairs, um, department. So if you move that ARPA reserve to that, they are one-time expenses. So it's not that you would need to increase your millage to cover that one million because they're not ongoing, they're one-time. So, and we can go into that more detail once we get to Community Affairs budget.
So what do y'all want to do with ACM? With Assistant City Manager? Do we want to leave that, that ninety thousand in for Assistant City? But with a hundred thousand, what the city manager was saying is the decision unit. Commissioner Campbell, Commissioner Borum, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I mean, if, if other cities have assistance. So.
What, what does city?
I think that's appropriate.
Commissioner Jones?
Well, I would like to know the duties of an assistant city manager, uh, because we also allocated other funds for P I O and a media person, and I want to know the duties and responsibilities of an assistant city manager to justify, uh, that type of salary. Maybe it's been, maybe it's been discussed before, but, um, I would like to see that to know, and I think that's good. Good information to have. Also, um, you know, going in to, as Ms. Shank said, current and new city manager.
Ten, nine?
The next chapter, when are you? I'm sorry, and, uh, basically, uh, see exactly what it's gonna take to get us a city manager. It may, it actually, it actually may mean that we must use more money to get a city manager. So, you know, that's something to consider. Consider, uh, prior to hiring a assistant city manager, if we only have half a year to, uh, to make that happen. So that's just something to consider. Also considering the, a city outside, our size and population, do they actually operate with assistant city managers with?
Well, I think everybody's turning, I mean, one of the things that you talk about as well is succession planning and no longer having one-person departments, I think, um. So that's part of the piece. But most cities our size don't have airports. Their utilities aren't to the extent that ours are. They don't have some of the resources that we have in the ten, in a ten thousand person city. The, I, I think Palaca's in a unique position based on size um, on what we've seen trending around the state, but again, we still have one-person departments. And at the end of the day, you know, God forbid, if something happened to the city manager, you, you find yourself scrambling for the next man up. And you place, really, you place a burden on existing staff, um, to, to double dip in essence and really almost volunteer for those positions. While you, within internal, or you go to, or as we've done in the past, you're going to senior advisors to come in temporarily to put a Band-Aid on something that if we plan properly, we've got it fixed in-house.
I think what it would also allow you to do is allocate supervision over departments, certain departments with the city manager retaining certain departments and an assistant city manager retaining others which might provide for a more efficient operation from your department heads. Um, and, and maybe a little bit more effective interchange and supervision of the various different departments you have. As the mayor indicated, you're ranging from airports to streets, um, to, of course, public works to on and on, cultural affairs, planning, and I think those, that planning function is gonna be as you see what we're beginning to see in Palaca, what's projected for Palaca. Um, I, I think that there probably is gonna be a need for more time spent in communication with the planning director about some of the things that you're seeing, some of the needs that you're seeing. So, um, added to what the mayor said, succession plan and so forth, uh, just, uh, a thought that, uh, you might be able to, um, to, to be ahead of, to, to generate a more efficient allocation of supervisory responsibilities if you had an assistant city manager in place.
Any comments, additional comments? Commissioner Jones?
Pardon my interruptions. I'm actually traveling, so I have intermittent.
I'll take a burger.
Uh, disruption, and I won't, I won't, I won't, I won't interrupt again, and maybe I, I have other comments when I'm present, but I, I can't hear some.
It's not an interruption, Commissioner, at all. Um, I think the commentary is good. Any other, any other comments from, from the commission?
Um, I just think, you know, adding the assistant manager does provide for business continuity. But, um, having that, I think, um, entertaining marketing, media manager might be not something that we would need so much, um, and I would guess at that point. But this is my, my opinion.
And that's something we can decide towards the end. So, um, I'll go ahead and add back the assistant city manager into the budget. We can move on to city clerk.
Okay.
City clerk, um, there weren't any significant changes in this budget. Um, everything pretty much stayed status quo, um, a little increase in schooling, um, which is gonna be normal across all the departments.
We can move that twenty-five into file retention there?
Yes, I, I, I made a note. Um, and I'll, I'll slot it into professional services. And moving on to legal. Another, um, oh, I'm sorry, general admin. Um, we have two general admin and government services departments. And these are kind of miscellaneous that don't really fall within a specific department. So you've got postage, um, city hall, we had the, you know, phone upgrades this year. Postage, um, Saseen's, copiers, building updates and security, that was ramped up a little bit. So we moved from the seventeen-five to thirty thousand in hopes to address, um, concerns that we have in regards to cameras and other types of security. And that was really the only notable change. So moving on to the next government services.
One, one second. What, what was that, the city clerk deal?
No, um, it was general admin.
You wanna go back there?
Well, no, I just seen customer service representative.
Oh, okay.
In there.
Yeah, go back to city clerk.
And we don't, do we have a customer service person? Because?
That position is currently vacant.
Yeah.
We struggle, we struggle citywide with customer service from end to end things going in. We struggle, we struggle, um, when things go in the system, whatever it may be, um, sometime it goes into a black hole. And the, I guess whoever put in those ca- uh, cases or work orders, work requests, sometime they're not communicated back to whether the status, uh, is complete or whatever the state is, what's the next step. So I think it's really important that we develop something in-house that, uh, we provide those services to the community. I've heard from a number of people, so so I just wanted to look at, and I sent that in last year. To, let's see what we can do from a customer service standpoint.
This position in particular is at the city hall, and it is for really the influx of calls and questions that we get to make sure they're being directed to the correct department as well as alleviating the city clerk so that she can perform, you know, the actual duties that need to get done.
It's the gatekeeper.
Yeah.
And so what happened, and, and so if you look at what we've got in the city hall right now, access to, access on a daily basis, you've got five people who are sitting in the lobby area because of lack of, because you don't have office spatial room allocated for them based upon certain things. If you have a gatekeeper, then what that does is it gets rid of some of the interruptions that come from basic questions that can be redirected to someone else, and it allows for greater efficiencies with your clerk, with your permitting clerk, uh, with your planner, with your planning clerk, all those different places. You get greater, you'll get greater efficiencies because the telephone, the telephone walk-ins always, and it's walk-ins for simple questions that can be handled with the person who's equipped to be able to do it with the basic knowledge of all departments and who handles what. Um, it, it'll change the day for the, it'll change the day for Ms. Krantz or, or even for Ms. Neely, um, as they move forward because they find themselves saying, hey, go to the police department, go to the airport for this, or go to the county for a permit when, I mean, and then not counting folks who just come in who need direction somewhere. And so if you got a gatekeeper, then it allows us to be more efficient. The phone doesn't ring and no one answers. You've got someone there and that's your job, and it changes the way we handle services overall. And then they can always go back into the system and enter if there's, you know, there's a work order or something that needs to be put in place for a specific, specific location.
That's bottom, I mean, this, that's bottom, that's what, I mean, that's what we need to do.
It was filled briefly. It didn't last long. And so we, we've got a, you know, that, that's a position I think that's critical to the operation, and I think you're absolutely right, Commissioner. So, moving on.
Um, legal. Um, I kept a flat amount for the contracted services for legal. That is another sad topic to talk about, but, um, Ms. Thomas's contract, um, will be expiring in this fiscal year, um, coming up.
Ms. Thomas, she's actually trying to, she's trying to retire? Council's, council's trying to retire.
Again.
We appreciate you unretiring for a little bit. But I, I, I think it brings a good conversation for us. And food for thought as we move forward. You've got city manager and the city attorney who are both leaving in, you know, the next nine, six to nine months, both of them. And we need to start to, we need to start thinking about succession plan.
Yeah.
Absolutely. And I, I, I think that's the point. And so, um.
If you would, for the headhunter, does the headhunter only, is it only inclusive of the city manager, or is it also inclusive of the city ma- well, both city manager and attorney?
It was only for city manager, um, and I got preliminary quotes just to try to put a number on that decision unit. Um, for the finance director, I believe we paid between sixteen and seventeen thousand. So city manager, based on the quotes that I got, were around thirty thousand, which we would have to go out to RFP for that. Um, so during that process, we could outline that we would like that executive recruiter to look for a city attorney as well. So we could do that in that process.
If I could, though, the question's gonna be whether you go with a full-time attorney or a part-time. Going out with a headhunter for a part-time attorney is probably going to be, uh, real, I'm sorry?
A waste.
Exactly. Um, so just, uh, again, as the mayor indicated, food for thought. If you're gonna go with part-time, a headhunter is gonna be of limited value to you because you're gonna be trying to, a part-time attorney is probably just gonna be drawing from the local area. And that, that, uh, population of, of attorneys who would be willing and able and to do that is gonna be limited enough so that I doubt you need a fifteen thousand dollar headhunter for that. If you're gonna go full-time now, that's something different.
It's a game changer. And, and this, and the number goes up significantly.
Exactly.
You're gonna build out an entire department. So if you, going away from, going away from a contract attorney, you're, you're now having to bring in support staff and other, and, and, and other costs that I, I think quite frankly will quadruple your budget.
Exactly. And, and and in spite of what Mr. Holmes says, I am a full-time attorney that is on contract. I'm just not in the office full-time, but to get a full-time attorney, you need, um, support staff. Um, what I wanted to bring up was, um, I think I sent you an email, Ms. Shank, was about the fines and fees. There's increased number of litigation that's going on from the city attorney's office that needs to be, um, funded. And I think you have like fines and fees or something like a thousand dollars. I think that's for court costs. But that's totally an insufficient number. With filing fees of like four hundred dollars and with service, um, process service fees, it's like a five hundred dollars each case, just to start, just to file a case.
Yeah, and I totally agree. I, I think that number's probably close to eight hundred bucks by the time you file a, acquire service and process. If it's a foreclosure, you'd also have to build title work into that or a, for instance, a nuisance abatement. So I, I totally agree and, and, uh, and Ms. Thomas said, forgive my slip of tongue, you're right, full-time attorney on contract.
So, and, and the other part is you also end up, typically, when you're dealing with contract attorneys, you end up with outside of that contract, separate costs for litigation, which is kinda what we had, um, initially with Mr. Holmes before he took on that position in a different, with, with, with the benefit aspect of it changing in order for us to create some cost savings. But, um, you typically end up with litigation costs being a separate contracted item, and the rates on that are different. You know, unless you raise your monthly and build it in some other kinda way. Cause you never know how long litigation's gonna last. You know, we find ourselves in that litigation with the boats. It's been, what, a decade? You know, and so those things are, you can't calculate it, so you can't logically expect it to happen. I, I think the reality is we've got Ms. Thomas on a coupon for a lot of stuff, and we've had the luxury of having a city manager who's an attorney as well, who was a prior city attorney who sometimes becomes the active city attorney. But, um, it works out because you end up with a wealth of legal knowledge sitting inside of the room, um, which kinda spoils you based on cost, what you end up with.
So, Ms. Thomas, would you think, and, and I realize this is a huge difference, but with the code enforcement activities that we've even most recently discussed, the foreclosures, the nuisance abatement, um, would you think that, I would say your fines and fees, I don't know what fines is really, but fees I think is probably more, uh, appropriate for that category. I was thinking ten to fifteen thousand dollars for fees.
Correct. I, I sent, like I said, an email to Ms. Shank yesterday when I saw this, um, that we should at least start with five, but I agree, ten to fifty more, more realistic.
Okay, so I'll make sure that I slot in legal claims, um, in your budget, Ms. Thomas.
Not, not legal claims, that's fees, that's her filing fees.
So that's like your filing fees, your process, serving, depositions, whatever. But then you got, as it relates to litigation costs, that's an entirely different, that's an entirely different ballgame. And so, um, I'm thinking you're gonna look at twenty-five thousand dollars or so, probably look at the litigation costs because of what we're doing actively with code enforcement, some of this other stuff. Um, you know, the typical cost you get a thousand to fifteen hundred bucks, um, to run one of those code cases through at a minimum. Um, you're doing evictions and some of those other things that we've done. Those, those are typically costs that are associated in addition to what you get on a normal basis unless you, unless you, depends on how you write your contracts up. And so in-court services come at hourly rate for the attorney. And it's a negotiable rate, but you know, any attorney who's worth anything is gonna, it's gonna be a few hundred dollars at a minimum. You know, you're gonna, you're gonna spend three hundred to three fifty for in-court services on most attorneys. It may be different on the government's side with a contract, but, um, those are pretty standard. Would you, would you agree, Ms. Holmes?
Yes, sir, I would.
And if you got one that's got forty years' experience, the price may be higher.
It sounds like I need a full-time attorney.
Well, no, you can afford it.
I can't afford it.
You can afford a full-time attorney.
As, as the mayor. Right, as the mayor said, you guys got me on a coupon, which I have not billed that or even included that in my contract separately for in-court appearances.
Yeah, but we, we can't afford, I don't, with our budget, the way it is right now, we can't afford a full-time legal department. One, we can't house them. Secondly, and secondly, it builds out additional staffing and support. And so it's a whole different game. I think the best way for us to approach it is to go back and look at where we were with Mr. Holmes. Um, was the, when Mr. Holmes was the city attorney and look at what we did from a budgeting standpoint. I think during those times, we put anywhere from ninety to a hundred thousand dollars in place for salaries and also for litigation costs. And, and though, and we still were getting, and we, we still got work that wasn't billed. And, and though, and we still were getting, we, we still got work that wasn't billed out in the same manner that people would typically do.
Mr. Mayor, also I want to, um, compliment Ms. Krantz. As a part of this entire legal services and legal department, because she is a certified paralegal, she has assisted me as that support. As well as being the clerk and being the support for Mr. Holmes. I just wanted to do a shout out for her, but that would be also something that you would need to consider and think about. If you wanted to have somebody contract in-house or, um, I agree, the situation with Mr. Holmes or. Relationship that Mr. Holmes had as a, um, outside, I mean, counsel would be a better financially for this.
So can we, next week, come, I can revisit these numbers, update it after you get together. And go from there. And, uh, I guess the three of you can get together and y'all can kind of talk about what a realistic number looks like.
Yes, sir.
Any questions? We can, we can move forward. Any, any comments from Commissioner up here now?
Finance is next. I did make a few adjustments to, um, operating supplies, um, as our printing has seemed to have gone up. And then also for the FGFOA training, I slotted for an additional staff member to go, um, due to. Promotions internally, I want to make sure that the staff that we have in our finance department, um, is trained up.
Can build increases into your own budget.
Less than everyone else. No, actually, I actually decreased my FGFOA training and instead put in for NIGP training, which is purchasing training. And they're, because of COVID, they're still doing webinars, so there aren't any travel expenses with that. So. I decreased it by a thousand. If I allot two thousand to each employee, there are five employees, it should be ten thousand, but I took a thousand off. Cause I decreased my FGFOA. Third-year contract for HCTR auditors, um, so I just made a note of that. And. There really aren't that many changes. If you have any questions. If not, we can move on to HR. HR, um, a notable addition is gonna be the Leadership Academy. We are proposing that we do the Leadership Academy again next year. This current year, we paid ten thousand dollars and that was for twenty-five staff members. And then you're also going to see an increase in the advertisements. Historically, they are split among every single department for the advertisement. So what, um, myself and Ms. Jones decided to do was rope it all into one. Because really she controls those advertisements. So in essence, she's watching what she's spending.
So let me ask this question. So it's twenty-five in general. If twenty-five doesn't show, does the price decrease or are we paying for the twenty-five overall?
Um, it's overall, it's a contracted price.
So if individuals who are slated to go, don't go, we're just out of that funding.
Correct. So last year, whenever we found ourselves in the Leadership Academy and we had open slots. We took people that showed interest. Those people will actually go into next year's Leadership Academy. Because they didn't get the full training.
We, we slotted twenty-five based upon department head suggestions at our own discretion. When some of those people, uh, did not, uh, either show an interest in coming. Or in the midst of that, we lost multiple people. Including the Public Works Director, Mr. Ladd, uh, Mr. Pearson, um, couple of others. We, we went ahead and, um, basically asked new people to come on in. But they didn't get the full benefit of the training because some of those people stopped coming or left the city midway through the process. So we tried to put people back in the slots, but, um, again, they did not get the full benefit of the entire process. Because of joining midstream.
And that's one semester. So twelve weeks. Questions on HR?
So, yeah, I got a question. We're looking at. So we're looking to bring in another person in. To HR?
That's correct. That's my, that's, that's correct, sir. That's my, uh, that's my suggestion. There, the HR department is, uh, obviously more than a one-person department. And, um. So I believe that we benefit, if you think about all the functions that the HR is being asked to do with our personnel, a hundred and fifty people. Um, I believe we'd benefit with an HR director in addition to the HR generalist that we have now.
I don't know what seventy-four thousand is gonna get you. I think the other piece of it is. You're gonna end up with two executives and no staff. So you don't have any clerical that's based upon what you have in place. Um, and then on the other side of it, we, we've got sixty-five hundred in employment advertisement. And then look like we have anything in recruitment. I know we've got significant turnover, difficulty finding people in all of these different places. I think Ms. Jones has been, um. Very creative in some of the job fairs or some of the other stuff that we've put in place to try to attract people. But the PD, for example, how many you down now?
Six, I believe, unless, uh, and, and there may be.
Just do, show me my fingers. Yeah, he's nine. So, so you're on two hands there. Um, you're talking, and so. In order to, so we need to look at, what do we do? Commission citywide for recruitment. Uh, recruitment, retention, all these different things. So that we can start to, we could kind of stop the bleeding as it relates to finding people on these jobs. Um, fire department is down, everybody's down and, you know, it's not gonna change because they're throwing more money out into this pot. You, you start throwing more of this stimulus money and more of this other stuff out there. It's, you, you've experienced it full-hand. And I just think that we've got to. Look at putting something in place so that, one, as we recruit. We can get to, because a lot of it's been done through social media at this point and newspaper. I, I think we've got to be able to go to some of these colleges or go to some of these, um, trade schools. And be able to say, hey, we're offering jobs on site. And this is what we're doing in order for us to get. You know. A workforce in place, which lines up with, uh, you know, with the vision. And it puts us in a position where we're, we're not currently onboarding and spending money. Um, because people are, at the end of the day, we're being outbid by other agencies. And so I, I, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's a hard thing to predict or a hard thing to resolve. I know it's been a, a nightmare for these last couple of years, literally trying to, to weather the storm of the pandemic. And the new trends and what's going on in the workforce, but we gotta do something.
Well, this is not, this is not a short term, but I feel that, um, I know that if we grasp our youth. Or, you know, those that are coming up of age to getting close to like graduation and things. Those are things that we possibly could do if we have those programs up and running that would capture the youth early. And we know that we have them invested, go through the proper channels. And I think that's just one way that we'll be able, that was one of my ideas with the internship, is to try to capture these students at an early. I mean, at an early age, early enough to say, hey, if you desire to be here, this is an opportunity for you and carry it out. I mean, I don't think it's, uh, far-fetched that if we bring that back to the table, that, that's something that could possibly help us curve. Um, like I said, it's not an immediate, um, resolution, but it's definitely a resolution in the years to come.
I think you have to do that and you have to do all of it. I think you can't just do one. And, and I think that's the thing. With sixty-five hundred, you're limited on what you can do. And the newspaper is gonna take most of that. And the rest of it, you can't, and we just can't continue to rely on Facebook and not have a budget in place for recruitment.
Well, I, I totally agree that you have to use every tool in the toolbox. Ms. Jones and I have had recent discussions. So that we've expanded our attempts to advertise our positions from just using the government sites and, and the city side. Um, we've, we've branched out to everything from Indeed to LinkedIn, actually, in recent times. To try to get additional, um, applications. We're, we're, uh, not getting a lot of applications in some of the positions that we're advertising now. I agree with you completely. Everything, I mean, I think that this is a time, um, when you, you. When, when no effort is one that's a bad effort, um, you know, you try, you try it all. We've tried the programs in school, Mr. The chief, fire chief can explain to you what our success rate has been with the program in school. Hasn't been very good, um, even though we have offered scholarships at both fire and police. And, you know, there probably are myriad of reasons why, but I don't know that that's a reason to stop. I'm not saying it's a reason to stop. I think it's more in what, in line with what the mayor's saying, and that is, I think in this time, you just about have to try everything. We're at a competitive disadvantage despite the salary study. You can talk to both, uh, well, the mayor men indicated what Daytona's paying for police officers. And in talk, we're in union negotiations right now, so believe me, I'm hearing what other people are paying for fire salaries. Uh, so you're at a little bit of a competitive dis- disadvantage on salaries right now. So I think anything you can do that's imaginative to try to attract is worth trying. So I agree, I'm not disagreeing at all.
Well, and, and this just in addition to what the mayor has stated with recruitment. I would strongly suggest that we look into job fairs. I know we want, we did one locally, but job fairs that are occurring. In some of our neighboring, um, communities, being a part of those to advertise what it is that we do have here. While we want a strong effort of what we have here, but again, there may be some people on the outskirts of Palaca. Um, that follows various job fairs that we may want to take in consideration, um, partnering with them. Um, I mean, I don't think it'd hurt anything by being at another place trying to recruit people to come to Palaca.
I agree. I think having that additional person will help with that too, because you have the day-to-day going on. So sometimes it's hard to step away to those job fairs. Um, and, you know, Ms. Jones does the best she can, but definitely having another person is gonna help.
And, and, and too, I don't think, um, we, we're losing staff just per se, all because of. Salaries, in, in, in my opinion, um, and when, when people are leaving. Um, do we do like exit interviews and see why, why they're leaving? And maybe get some feedback along those lines because, and I can guarantee you it's not all salaries. Uh, and I think that the city, uh, city's, uh, salary is in line with. Most other cities. I mean, we've looked at it. Are we not?
I think it has a lot to do with the different departments, um, various reasons maybe within different departments, but a lot of it does do no down to finances.
I, I, I think.
We're looking at overall, we looked at overall salaries and benefits along everything. So if, if I'm wrong, if, how much are we all just?
It's such a fluid environment, you know, this, we're in unseen, unseen times, uh, you, you. Uh, you don't have to do anything but watch the TV to see that Waze Pro in Jacksonville is not providing some services right now. Because they're saying they're twenty-five drivers short or whatever. They're paying a five thousand dollar sign-on bonus right now. Plus wages that are in excess of hours. Uh, yeah, we do try to do exit interviews. And matter of fact, recently I went down and just sat down with everybody in the sanitation department. Just in an informal setting and said, what's your, your, you tell me the biggest thing that you think is a problem right now with employment. And the one word was money, money, money. So I don't disagree with anything that's being said. It's probably not just a, a single issue matter. But, yeah, um, I think the salary survey was great, but remember, we were dealing with historical, that historical data. And we all know what's happened over the last few months.
Right. And, and that's a good point, but, um, also too, you, you made a, 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 an excellent statement. When you said that they were given five thousand sign-on bonus for new employees. But look at what that does to your people who have been with you. Um, and, and, um, for, for, for a long tenure employee. And so you got somebody who's coming in fresh off the streets. And they're getting sign-on bonuses and when you got people who have not been given raises for years. And I can understand why that would be some turnover.
That's it, Jack. I wasn't talking about us. I was talking about Waze Pro.
Right, but I'm saying that that's the model that's out there. I'm not saying that the city of Palaca is doing it, but I'm just saying that's the model that's out there. And we can't compete with that. So when we do offer those things, you got people who've been with you five, ten, fifteen, twenty years. And you're getting somebody who's coming on with a five or ten thousand dollar sign-on bonus. I see why it would be some major turnover in, in, in different jobs. So we have to look at all those different things and we talked about compression and everything else. So all of those things is a complex situation. There's no magic wand. But we have to look at all of these things collectively to see what we can do. But I, I think that for the city of Palaca, I think we do well here. We need to continue to pay our people as much as we can without breaking the bank.
Yeah, but, I got you. But I, I think Commissioner, one of the things that's happening is the guy who's been with us for ten or fifteen years. Is now being offered that fifteen thousand dollar signing bonus somewhere else. He can retire from here and go there. And he becomes that new guy. And so what, or we got officers who've been here three years and they've got some good training. And they can go to another agency and make twenty grand more. And so, um, it's always been an issue. Money's gonna continually be an issue. You're never gonna satisfy the money question. Because here's the deal, while we were regrouping in October, uh, as we moved into the budget, everybody else was too. So when we set our standards, our standards now became the floor. When we thought we were in the middle of the road, we became the floor because everybody else just started jumping up again. And it's happening over and over. And so I think the reality is, as we continue on, the purpose of the salary survey was so that it becomes a moving document. And ever so often, we have to go back and look at it. I know it's, we're less than a year into it now. And I agree, we can't break the bank trying to compete because we aren't Jacksonville, we aren't Daytona. Daytona's got what, two hundred plus sworn officers? You know, we can't compete with that. They've got a multi-billion dollar, um, tourism budget. But. The reality is we have to compete with them because they're only forty-five miles away. We've gotta compete with St. Augustine because, and their salary may be eight thousand dollars different, um, or St. John's County. And so we've gotta consciously say, hey, okay, Palaca's a smaller agency, but our salaries are competitive. They're, they may not be as high, but they're competitive. And you may not be trolling a thirty-mile area. You may be trolling a five-mile area. And so, but, or from an HR perspective, we're, you know. I mean, from HR or from Public Works, we can say, hey, we're a smaller community. So your tasks aren't gonna be as vast over the course of the day. You calculate that as well, you know. So it's kind of like, um, and you're looking at sanitations. A lot of guys jumped up and went to Waze Pro. But there's a difference between being on the back of the truck with a lift, being on the back of the truck throwing stuff into the, into the back of the truck and jumping out when you're a driver. So yeah, you make five dollars more an hour, but you earn it. And so we have to make sure that as we advertise what we get, what we have in place. That we always consciously do that. And I think that the city manager and Ms. Jones. I think, you know, and, and all the department heads continually try to do as much as they can. But I think it's a lot easier if I say, chief, you can go, you know, we got a little money for travel. You can go to the job fair for everyone who's in criminal justice, leaving the University of Florida, or FAMU or Bethune-Cookman. And you could go there and try to recruit guys who we know we may not have but three years, but they're gonna come out with college degrees. It's gonna up the standards of the agency in some areas from an education standpoint. And we may, you know, we may retain some of those guys based upon certain opportunities that exist. So, you know, those are the things that we have in place. So we gotta consciously keep moving. Um, and I think it's doing what you said, which is being conscious of the budget, what the impacts are. But at the same time, continually saying, we're gonna be competitive. We're going to be, we, we're not gonna be them because that's not who we are. But we're gonna make sure that we're competitive. And I, I think from the recruitment side of it, you're hamstrung a little bit. When, you know, when, when you got sixty-five hundred for the year. When, you know, when when you got sixty five hundred for the year to do certain things and that spreads out all departments. So when you look at it, that's like eight hundred bucks per department. And, you know, if or less. And so I think that number has to be higher. Uh, and I I I think it'll make, I think it makes a difference. You you agree with that, Mr. Holmes?
Absolutely.
Um, what that number is, I don't know, but I I think it's worth a conversation if that's something that the commission's open to. And I know Commissioner Jones has, you know, spent a number of years in HR as well. Um. And I know that, you know, we've all sat here on the commission, on the dais and had to deal with it from our standpoint. And everybody sees, you know, what those impacts are. And we're constantly looking around and the faces in the room change. So, um, that's my spiel. I I think we're all in agreement. It's just a matter of making sure that we do it in a responsible manner, but I I think we've gotta put an additional tool in the chest. You agree with that, Ms. Jones? So is there anything else that you would like to see that you think would help you out?
Hard copy, yeah, the hard copy.
Those glasses might help too.
That's for that's for HR, right?
So what we're doing is, so the suggestion is to take uh is you're you're basically getting rid of the admin position. And adding additional money for a director?
Correct. So the salary difference is between the coordinator position and the director. So it isn't a complete added new position. It's just you're seeing the difference in the salaries.
Anything in the training budget from this from this Jones?
Yes, we have um four thousand dollars budgeted, which is two thousand dollars per person. So when we sat down, I think we discussed adding two thousand. So that there would be enough training for two individuals to go instead of just one.
Is that an adequate amount for the um training for that department?
Your typical travel and training is about two thousand a person?
No, okay, we have it set for two, but it depends on actually what um conferences. Because when we're just talking about the annual SHRM um conference that's held, that would even virtually, two thousand dollars would take that for one person. Wow, that's virtual for the annual because in person it's actually held in New Orleans. So you can imagine the cost if you go in person. So just to be virtually with that annual conference, it's like seventeen fifty. And that's discounted depending on how you sign up, so.
And you missed and you missed the opportunity to network, which is the critical piece.
Yes.
I think when you're talking, I at the end of the day, I'd rather not um shortchange. The opportunity to talk to other government HR folks to be able to say, you know, when you're in those conferences. Our benefit at Florida League of Cities isn't necessarily the training. It's the things that happen in between the trainings and the relationships that you build so that you can bring that stuff back. So you can find out what they're doing. Um, in Oklahoma City, that may be beneficial for Palaca. And now you've got another person who is, you know, a resource. And and so I I think that, you know, when you're doing this stuff virtually, sometimes there's a disadvantage. And so at the end of the day, while it may cost an extra two thousand dollars to go to that conference. You're gonna bring back a twenty thousand dollar savings and what we put in place as it relates to efficiencies of operation. And so those are the places I think that we have to make sure we're conscious. Of how we spend dollars and are we truly maximizing the benefit in doing that? So.
I would, you know, would you just increase, I guess, if you increase the budget for at least about to thirty five? Maybe thirty five hundred, five thousand maybe? So that 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 can happen unless you have like a pool, a pool of money that where, okay. If um any department need, or if another department doesn't take their training, then you can pull from those lines. But just make sure that the training that needs to happen, happen.
Correct. And that's pretty standard practice um down to what we do. For instance, um. I found myself having some additional funding um because I did not go to the FGFOA conference. So I actually moved funding over to the clerk's budget for travel. So it it is common practice for us. Um, so right now we have four thousand slotted. Last year it was two thousand. So are you suggesting to increase it in additional, in addition to that?
Cause the virtual almost eat it up.
We'll go ahead and add an additional two.
Yeah, virtual training.
Make it six thousand, okay.
Cause you got travel and lodging.
Okay.
The um, the only difference is they're doing it for two people.
Two people, so just.
But it it, you know, it could be a situation where only one person's going or or. But I I am. I I think that's a critical piece. As far as the the budget for recruitment. I would like to see at least um. I think we need to put a ten thousand dollar recruitment budget in place um just as a, you know, as a as a test. So that we can start to see what we can do um and see if it has a benefit this year overall on. Getting us a a different applicant pool. And so we find ourselves in a lot of these positions where we don't necessarily get qualified applicants in place. And we're re-advertising, taking on a cost. And, you know, if we position ourselves and we go to the right place, then you don't have to do that. And so, um, and and that's not counting the man hours that go into putting it all together. And so, you know, we may save um by going on Indeed or doing some other things where if we went to one of these professional job fairs. We may be in the mix with people, then we can get a better feel of who they are at that time. So, um. I think, Mr. Mayor, there's a shining example of what happens when you meet the people face to face. Um, and you get and you see what's going on and it's instant returns. Um, I'll probably never say that again, but just. But no, I I I think he's a prime example. The city manager and I got a chance to go out and meet him um face to face. And you go out and and have that conversation and the end result was you now have an understanding of the person behind the resume.
Of course. Now, when we built that recruitment budget, was it something that we put together internally? Would we do any um like looking at some of the other budgets from other cities or surveys or? How was it built?
It's not in there.
Advertiser right now. We're trying to build it now. So we only have sixty five hundred advertiser.
Right, so I mean, it it could be more than that because when you say you calculated like eight hundred dollar uh 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 department. So if you're trying to recruit people um to fill these positions across the city. It should not be restricted to, I mean, I think it could probably be even more, I mean, in terms of.
Uh, I mean, you know, I'm saying add ten thousand to that sixty five hundred. But I think the reality, but but the reality of it is that twenty five thousand would probably be a better number, but I don't know what impacts that's gonna have.
In twenty twenty five and let's see where it goes and adjustments from there, I guess.
Yeah, so you look at that as a mark, yeah, twenty twenty five.
Right, you don't wanna restrict, you don't wanna restrict.
Twenty five. So.
To your point, Mr. Mayor, also uh within that recruitment budget, you could allocate money for. Bringing some of your candidates who might apply from out of town down for a personal interview. So, you know.
That that's the, that's that's part of it. That's absolutely part of it.
May I ask a question, please?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Only it's only for the people that are present.
I am present just via technology. Um, and I and I don't, I can't look at it right now, but are there allocations within the? Just say the police or the fire or any other department for recruitment?
No.
And if so, can, so there's none, absolutely none.
It's all funneling through HR. It's all falling through that. They're using that sixty five hundred bucks to do everything citywide. And that's where, and that was one of the big issues. That's why we're having, that's why it's coming up.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure just so that if there was that that money could not be reallocated to go through HR instead of directly. The um, the department itself. That's the only reason why I was asking.
Right, right. So, definitely, appreciate it. Um, any other questions or comments on HR?
So what we put in it, twenty five?
Commissioner McCaskin suggests twenty five. Um, Miss Shane, this is, you think this is a good stopping place for us?
We have two left that I think we can get through quickly.
What are they?
Planning and zoning and IT.
Okay, um, yeah, okay, we'll move forward.
IT's last. Um, planning and zoning, um. Not too many changes in this, but I will note that we did talk to our current um provider for the copiers and leases. And we are budgeting for a printer fodder rental. Um, I'll defer to Ms. Walsh to explain the benefits of that. But if you think about how much we pay in printing to go to Staples every time we need a wide format print. It's something that we can actually lease through Sistens and it would save us money. Cause it's about two dollars a page at Staples. Sistens, that's who we have our current contract with.
So that's also just for the purposes of uh just the historical context. Look at your local providers as well to see if they offer it because um when we switched our printing contract. There it was a point of contention. So um I think we want to make sure we look at, give them an opportunity to bid as well. So that um we prepare apples to apples and go from there. So you remember that, Mr. Holmes? So I do. So I just want to make sure that when you do it, I I think um just make sure, see if there's a. See what local options exist as well and then you can wait on what you got as you're doing your bids.
On larger jobs.
Well, I'll 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 give you some, I I'll give you some history. So I think.
Just wanna make sure we're, you know, getting the.
The best bang for the buck. So at the end of the day, I just want you to make sure that you dot your i's and cross your t's. So.
Um, legal ads, um that is something that we did notice and uptick last year. We prepared for that in this year's budget. And also projecting in next year's budget um due to, you know, kind of catching up on all the cases that were behind. Um, the legal advertisement is at fourteen thousand, whereas historically you didn't really see anything being spent out of there, so.
But we're gonna see more.
I don't know if I got that sheet.
We also only have one. One uh newspaper right now, General's Countywide Circulation. So whereas before you might be able to run legal ads. Um, you had some options, you don't now.
Yeah, so. I I think we're gonna see a steady increase as it relates to where we are. Also, one of the things I want us to look at in the coming year is. The revival of a building and zoning department for the city with the amount of action that's taken place. The county is already overwhelmed with what they have in place. And like everybody's, they're amping up. At some point, that's gonna be a conversation that we look at as we start talking about impact fees and all this other stuff about. Going back in-house or contracting or whatever it may be in order um to get some of those services over here. Because this, everything's becoming a hotbed and putting them right now. And it's sooner or later, you gotta have that conversation. And so, you know, I think the county's done a great job and and helping us. It's been a great partnership, you know, looking at Fire Marshal Services, some of those other things that were there. But, you know, uh, Sister Chief Branford, you you know, you're you're out there on the run every day. It's it's never been this active around here, so um. Yeah, I think some of it, Ms. Walsh has been looking at as well, is building out a department um for the future. And so that may take some sacrifice for us and it may be an opportunity to at least start to cost it up as we look into the next year. So, um, anything else, Ms.? Miss Shane?
Um, there is one decision unit for planning and zoning, um which is the comp plan. That is seventy five thousand dollars and that's for a consultant to come in and update the city's comp plan. So that's something that as we go through, once again, it's on that list for consideration. Do you want to speak about the comp plan?
I don't think she has to. She's already talked about it. We know it's necessary.
Okay, okay.
My apologies. Um, we don't have to do an evaluation appraisal report right now because our comp plan has. Required elements in there. Um, for example, you might remember last year we passed, we included a uh or adopted. A property rights, private property rights element in the comp plan that was required by the statutes and the latest legislation. So we are up to date in that respect. However, in the comp plan, there's many things that that just just need to be refreshed. Things have changed a lot since two thousand eight, two thousand nine, as you all know.
And so.
It would help set the vision for the entire city.
Yeah. So uh, so we don't need to hear amendments. Um, but I guess the. You've also looked for some funding sources for that as well?
We did. We, that's something else I wanted to let you all know. Um, I didn't want to. I don't want to, uh, what do you say, pre, what sort of looking for? I wanted to say.
Before the horse.
Yeah, but we uh we did receive some, we we applied for three grants through the DEO this past uh summer, early summer. We were awarded one. And it was for a historic preservation survey update. So that was, and that's in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. One of those applications was for the comp plan update, but we didn't get that one.
So what's the pleasure of the commission at this point as it relates to complian?
I I say we need to add it in. Um, it has to be done and there's no sense in. Shortchanging that because we got some requirements that we have to meet and we might as well go ahead and focus on. You know, getting ahead of the curve as opposed to waiting. Uh, being reactive. We don't wanna be reactive, we wanna be proud.
This is Chris, it's the critical piece to the puzzle at the end of the day. Comp plan is the driver. Um, we are, we've had this conversation for. For a number of years as to where we were. Uh, we even had Mr. Holmes working on uh ear amendments at one point as counsel. Cleaning up some stuff so that we'd be in compliance. So it was kind of a, I'll say a science project for lack of any other term that. Who we ended up taking on um by, not by choice necessarily at that time. But um, we learned that we were, you know, this was two thousand fifteen or sixteen or so. And we we learned that, you know, our public hearings were were extremely old and the community age changed significantly. And, you know, the longer we wait, the longer we're gonna be in the same position. So I I think this is, this is the time to start looking at that and having that conversation. Commissioner McCaskin?
Just walked out.
Okay, so by consensus with me and Commissioner Borum and Commissioner Campbell, you agree?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, sir, I agree.
Okay, so we. We got it. All right, no, I'll just get, I'll give her heart out. Tell her we voted it down when she comes back. Uh, so, um, so yeah, so that's four. So that's, let's just, let's add it in and see what it does. Budget's growing by the minute.
All right.
All right, thank you.
IT, um, one increase that we have in there is the Inspire Technology Contract. And then you'll also see in software subscriptions and licenses, that is where we've housed everything for the Office three sixty five. The antivirus, um, the ADG and ClearGov. So if you remember, ClearGov is the digital budget book that was approved, that seventy five hundred of that increase. And then also we found. And then also, we found a lot of users, um, needing to add more licenses for Adobe. Which is about seventeen dollars a person a month.
What are we looking at for, um, telephone stuff that we talked about? Telecommunication, are you in, in there? Remember we talked about looking at, um, telecommunications adjustments? Looking at different carriers?
Yes, um, that is not included in here. So we did receive a quote back, I believe, from FirstNet. And we were comparing our current costs, um, with Verizon to FirstNet. So that's still being looked at, but no, it is not built into this number.
There's some other providers I'll link you up with.
That would actually be in every department budget, because it'd be in their communications lines.
Yeah, I'll, um, I've got another contact for you as well.
Okay, um, and then also hardware, we, every year, we, um, get with our IT department and our IT contractor and go over laptops, computers and toughbooks that need to be replaced, and that is on a cycle.
We doing anything with hotspots? Additional hotspots?
Um, we just have the MiFi, I believe. I don't know, I'm sorry. I can't speak on that.
About getting some more? Commissioner, we decided not to do the complian stuff. No, just. No, we, we, we took it, I just, we took it under consideration. We got your nod. But I'm with, but you answered just right. So, from, not from a compliance standpoint, from a need.
As far as the equipment portion, we are fine as a stance for hotspots right now. We don't, we don't have a need for additional hotspots. Um, I think, uh, one of the pro, one of the, um, things we're looking at currently is what else the other providers can provide for us. And what we can get in addition that may, uh, not only when we're looking at cost, but may assist us with additional equipment.
Okay, um, so like, for example, the, our IT in the, in the Price Martin Center, for example. It is, um, it was about like, the IT in the Price Martin Center was like Commissioner Ralz's, uh, 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 IT today. It was trying to get that signal the other day online. Uh, it ended up working out well, but those are places where we had difficulty, and so.
River Center was another one.
Yeah.
Um, I believe all of those were fixed and addressed.
Are we looking, uh, now, I apologize, but we're talking about the hotspots or the Wi-Fi?
Now, where Twitch comes from. Yeah, so on the Wi-Fi side. So those are areas where we look at what we need to do. So, everybody good with what we got so far in RT?
Will that also be included for, um, future?
For. He's with Commissioner Jones now.
Technology.
Did you say Jenkins? Commissioner, will you repeat it?
The, uh, I guess we were talking about this.
Yes, uh, I think what he's trying to refer to is the, um, IT or the, uh, internet capabilities over at Jenkins is very low. The reception, receiving different things and the need to increase, uh, Wi-Fi or, uh, internet capabilities at Jenkins.
That is not built in there, but I anticipate as we go through that grant for Jenkins and the upgrades to the facility. That's something we could address in that. I'll make sure I make a note of it in Jenkins as a note, cause Jenkins actually has its own department.
I have a question on, uh, Adobe. Wha- what you know, what that they're using? Are they using Adobe Writer or Reader?
Um, Writer.
Writer? Well, yeah, but you got different, different. Either reader or writer.
We found that staff needs the writer to have the editing capabilities, to be able to have electronic signatures as needed. Not all staff, no, um, but we've had to increase our licenses is the problem. So as we're adding on, you know, more staff that needs that capability, we're having to add licenses. And it's about seventeen dollars a month per person.
Right, but, but that's per, per person. So you just added it per person as opposed to all staff?
Yeah, it's per person. Hold on, I'll tell you exactly how many I, um.
I think basically what she, and just speaking on in terms of the police department, you have different areas and different individuals within the police department that have to have the sign on. Uh, uh, ability, um, and not having that on the computers doesn't allow. For, for instance, I'll give you, uh, an example. We do our warrants now, uh, online electronically. So you have to have supervisors and administration that are able to sign, and the judges sign, and the lawyers sign, uh, electronically now. And not having that Adobe, uh, capability won't allow us to do that. So it's just certain individuals, not a- all the way across the board.
Right, that's what, that's what I was saying, you know, just, as, as a need as opposed to a hundred and sixty-seven. Right, cause it, you know, you, if you don't wanna add a cost, I mean, it helps out.
And we've tried to hold the line. That's something that I watch closely. So as, um, the need rises for a person to be added, I review the list to make sure that, you know, maybe someone could be removed. Um, so that is something we look at. So for Acrobat, I budgeted for thirty-five users.
You, you got it in control. And, and, and do we still, oh, I know the county don't, don't use Inspiring anymore, do they? Are they still?
I don't believe so. I think they ended their contract with Inspire.
Yeah. So are we still good with Inspiring? They're good with us?
Um, Mr. Holmes? I, I will tell you from my standpoint and Jonathan's, we have not experienced any changes, um, with the turnover since Corbett left. Um, I know that recently Jonathan worked with them on a water tower project, and him and Kayla can speak more to that. Um, but as far as I know, it went seamless.
I just wanna make sure, you know, we, we're getting the services that we're paying for. See, I know if the county moved to not use them or just.
The county just did it.
The county.
Any other comments, questions, concerns on IT? Seeing that.
Oh, one other thing. Now, you know, they, we just had that one law passed where they, they're gonna have to comply from a cybersecurity standpoint and implement different controls. Um, how are we gonna move forward with that by twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four?
I, I believe in their presentations, they had addressed that, but we'll make sure that we, um, follow back up on that and include you in that conversation.
All right, or just, you know, we need to look, yeah, look at all those different people. Okay, that's on there.
Anything else? You sure? All right, we're at twelve o'clock. Um, we're gonna go ahead if there's nothing else. Any closing comments, Ms. Shane?
Nothing. Thank you for your patience. Um, I do anticipate potentially needing another budget workshop, um.
Figure early September date will get us where we need to be, and we can go from there. Um, commissioners, anything else? Mr. Holmes?